Since the meeting is being recorded, thank you.
Morning.
Morning, how are you?
Is it okay?
It's surveying the city. Looks like our Pantham Shreve Street's all been cleared and pushed back.
Oh, good.
That's a good thing. Yeah. Open up this. Good morning, our home. Good morning.
Always.
Good, so, so, there's only agenda for discussion, see if it should be placed on November sixteenth agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Understood. Understood, thank you. A lot of empty seats.
Turn our clocks back this weekend, we do the only, we turn our clocks back this weekend, right?
It's coming again.
Don probably already has it set. He's like so OCD about that, he goes around, it's the time.
So for four days, you just don't know what time it is?
I'm sleeping like five o'clock, he doesn't change his alarm, it's like, it's not the time.
It's awesome.
Good class, yes.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
All right, let's turn that down.
Okay. Good morning, it's nine o'clock, I'd like to call to order the November second, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting. Let the record reflect that all city council members and city officials are present. If you please stand and join me for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. I asked the mayor if I could give you a brief statement before I prayed this morning. And she agreed to that. And so, people have asked me, as chaplain, what do you think of the storm? What do you think of, you know? And I've been telling people that we have all gone through the same storm, but we were all in a different boat. Some of us are in a boat that sunk, some of us are in a little bigger boat that took on damage. Some of us are in an aircraft carrier that didn't know there was a storm out there at all. So my message to each and every one of you is have compassion on one another as we all go through this storm together. Thank you. Shall we pray? Lord, my Savior and King, I know that you are my refuge from the storms of life that beat and crash against us. Only you can sustain us and keep us safe against the attacks of the enemy, who wishes to see us falter and fail to attain the goal that you have promised us restoration. When no one else is able to provide support, you are a rock of safety. Support us now, our Lord, for we are tired, we are weary from the struggle. We need your rest, we need your safety. In Joshua one eight, it says, "This is my command: be strong and courageous; don't be afraid or discouraged, for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go." Lord, bless the city council and decisions they make today, in the name of our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carlo. Okay, I don't have any general announcements to make at this time. Our next meeting will be on November sixteenth. That will be the meeting where the two new city council members and myself will be sworn in. That'll be the transition of city councils from the two thousand and twenty-two group to the two thousand and twenty-three group. So I hope you can all join us for that, it's always fun to go through that process. And, well, it is, it's kind of neat, I like it. So, and we will acknowledge the outgoing council members as well at that time. For the agenda, there's one thing that I would like to move up on the agenda with everyone's approval. We have our lobbyist here, and she does have to catch a plane, so if it's okay with everyone, as soon as we finish the CRA agenda, we will move up the discussion with the lobbyist, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. All right, so, we're going to begin with several presentations, and I'm going to go down to the podium on the floor for the very first one, I'll be right with you. Maybe the third one. So the very first day that I walked into this building several years ago, Gary Butler and I became very good friends, and I ended up being on the Board of Directors for this wonderful, wonderful museum that we're in today. And the Military Heritage Museum took over this building almost four years ago, and with the help of Fisherman's Village, who owns the building, we negotiated a lease agreement, and this is our new home for the Military Heritage Museum. And it has grown to be one of the most outstanding attractions in southwest Florida, and certainly has become very popular, not only in our community, but all over Florida as a destination for folks who want to come in and learn about the folks that served in the military past, present, and future. And it is now my honor to not only be the mayor for this city, but to serve as the president of the Board of Directors of this wonderful facility. And it is with the help of Gary Butler as the leader at the helm, and all the wonderful folks on his team, that they have certainly made this quite the destination, and it's very popular in the community and outside of the community in Florida. And so, a few months back, we established a new acknowledgement for people in the community who have served as good ambassadors for Punta Gorda, and I would like Gary Butler to please join me down here for a presentation. So Gary, it's a great pleasure to give this to you. This is the City of Punta Gorda Mayor's Ambassador Award, and this goes to you and to the museum for all your outstanding achievements in the community, for your help to the city with all of our boards and committees, and getting our transition to this building for the rest of the next couple of years. And we sincerely appreciate everything that you've done for the community, and I for one could not be prouder to be part of this organization, so thank you very much. And I also want to put one more item on the record. We're also very proud to announce for the very first time publicly that we have purchased the Huey helicopter, and it will now remain here for the duration, so we're very happy about that.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to say, just a couple of brief things. First off, it didn't, you know, it's not one person, it's a huge team that built this museum, and a lot of community partners. But I want to point to one group of people that inspires me every day. Yesterday, we reopened the museum for the first time since we closed just before the hurricane. And we knew that there wasn't going to be a line out the door, and we did have some, there was no line out the door, though. But what we did have was every single one of our veteran volunteers here with a day. Everyone that was scheduled to be here, we're here. If there's nothing that inspires you as much as that does, I don't know what does, their commitment to the mission of the museum, to giving back to the community, is just unparalleled. Next week, on Veterans Day, we have a full day of activities with the theme, "Why They Still Serve." It's a tribute to all of our veterans who continue to volunteer in our communities, not just here, but in so many other places. Veterans not only contribute at a much higher percentage than non-civilians, but they also contribute a much more significant number of hours as a way of continuing to honor the country they serve. So join me, I hope you can, next week, as we pay tribute to all of our veterans who not only have done so much in serving our country in the military, but also as for the civilians as well. Thank you.
Every time I walk in this building, I just get chills because it is so emotional for me. And I just, I thank all of the volunteers that work so very, very hard to make this museum what it is. It's the heart and soul of the museum, and we have several, a couple hundred actually, volunteers who take their time out of their personal lives, and they love it here. It's like they come here, it's like their camp. And I think some of the wives must kick them out during the day to make them go someplace. So I know that some of the volunteers come here because they've been kicked out of their house for the day, but, but, you know, you go up into the simulator room someday and just watch the interaction with the folks who were pilots in their previous lives, they were airline pilots, and they're working on the flight simulators. It's just, it's just a fun place to be. We've incorporated a lot of things with the local schools, and we're doing a lot, a lot of education programs for the students. So there's a lot of things going on here, I do hope that you will think of the museum when you, when you feel generous when we do the Giving Challenge events and that sort of thing. So thank you again to Gary and the staff for making it what it is. So next thing, we have two service awards. And our first service award is for Mary Beth Legg, who is ten years of service with the city. And is she here? Oh, come on down.
Kristin Simeon, Finance Director, and I just wanted to say a few words about Mary Beth Legg, our payroll coordinator. As the payroll coordinator, you can be assured our employees are very happy with, and know her very well to make sure we have an accurate payroll every two weeks. Mary Beth has been with us, obviously, ten years, she started as accounts payable and moved up to the payroll coordinator. She's a Florida native, and she's very family oriented. So she spends a lot of time with her husband, her three children, and her six grandchildren. I know she loves to camp and go to Disney. She's very outgoing and always willing to help in whatever area we need her to help in. So thank you, Mary Beth, for your years of service.
And our next award is for ten years of service, and this goes to our HR Director, Jeff Payne. Come on down.
I'll keep it short. HR is a tiny little department in the city. We play a lot of different roles, from personnel to, after Ian now, is risk management, trying to get the facilities reopened and the damage restored. So it's been an exciting ten years, and I'd like to thank everybody, it's been a pleasure.
Okay, next, Councilmember Cummings, would you please come down and make, and do the presentation for the proclamation?
Morning, everybody. Whereas the vision of Saint Mary's Baptist Church is to support spiritual growth and enhance individual lives, and our motto is "All Souls Matter." And whereas Saint Mary Baptist Church offers several ministries, including Celebrate Recovery, which meets weekly with ministry leaders striving to provide support to individuals in Charlotte County that are recovering, as well as to provide faith-based support, including large group worship services, testimonies in small group lesson study. And whereas the church has established the Dreammakers and Dream Chasers Youth Group for girls aged ten and up, which meets twice a week, twice a month, with Miss Sarita Maddox, Ministry Leader, where they receive access and exposure to diverse cultural topics, career preparation, life skills. And whereas the church also established Man Up, a youth mentoring group open to young men eighteen and under. Ministry Leaders Fred Matthews and Terrell Silver provides support and guidance to help them develop into successful and productive leaders. And whereas after the devastation of Hurricane Ian, Saint Mary Baptist Church partnered with the Cooper Street YMCA and the NWCP, which housed the Red Cross to provide mini-individuals in service. For four weeks, the church site was used to provide lunch and dinner daily, along with abundant resources and recovery items, including water, tents, tarps, first aid kits, yard cleaning equipment, baby items, internet access, charging station, and more. And therefore, the city council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida hereby recognizes the church's good work and proclaiming November second, two thousand and twenty-two, as Saint Mary's Baptist Church's Day, passing through the adoption and regular session the second day of November by Mayor Lynn Matthews, and welcome up Reverend Thomas.
Thank you so much for this proclamation, I just wanted to stand and say, as we reveal, we thank you for your support. For the church, we are doing a lot of things to try to help the life as well as the spiritual, but we know that first has to deal with the natural. But we thank God for you all, as we continue to do and strive to enhance this community, not just the community, but the county too. So thank you so much for this award, keep on praying for us, that we'll be everything that God wants us to be. Thank you so much.
Okay, we do have another proclamation, and this is one I will read. Proclamation for the City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas, in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim November 2022 as National American Indian Heritage Month and urges citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Passed and duly adopted this 2nd day of November 2022. Sign, Lynn R. Matthews, Mayor. And accepting is Debbie Harrington.
My name is Debbie Harrington. I serve as Region of the Charlotte Bay Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And as one of our missions of preservation, historical preservation, we do honor the American Indian heritage as part of our projects. And with that being said, I wanted to give a grateful thanks to Mayor Lynn Matthews and all the members of the City Council. And I am very proud on behalf of our chapter to accept this proclamation. Thank you.
Okay, this is the time when we will accept public input from, from folks in the audience. So, I just have a couple of housekeeping notes that I will read before we begin with that. On the screen, you will see the rules of conduct that must be followed in the City Council chamber. And please familiarize yourself with those before you get up to speak. Members of the public who wish to address the council should use the guest podium at the center of the room. The podium to the right of the stage is for staff, excuse, would be to the left of the stage, is for staff and applicant presentations only. Speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name for the record. If it is a quasi judicial hearing, you will also have time to speak on that hearing at the time that the hearing is taking place. Please also state that you have been sworn in if you are speaking on a quasi judicial hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak and sharing minutes is not permitted. Speakers are to direct all comments to the City Council, not the audience or any one individual council member. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience is not permitted. When there are multiple individuals who wish to speak, please try not to reiterate lengthy comments made by others to ensure an effective and efficient meeting. This ensures everyone has an opportunity to speak. Audience and speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. No applause, sidebar conversations, or booing before, during, or after any speakers. Please refrain from talking in the audience during the meeting. If you have supporting documents that are being displayed during the meeting, you must provide copies to the city clerk and those will become part of the permanent record. The citizens' comments portion of the meeting is not intended to be a question and answer session. This is for citizen comments only. Council members should refrain from answering questions or debating issues with members of the public. And with that, we will allow anyone who wishes to come to the podium to speak to the council on any matter. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Michael Hirsch. I live in Seminole Lakes. I'm here to talk about your essentially repeal of the egregious unconstitutional sign ordinance. It's a little comfort to stand here and say, I told you so. I'm really here to say, now what are you going to do to make sure it doesn't happen again? Most of you voted and passed a sign ordinance that was blatantly unconstitutional. You should have known it. The only supporting document I could have brought with me is the Bill of Rights, and that could be displayed up there, too. You should have known it. Your city manager certainly should have known it. And I'm sure your city attorney knew it. The problem was, nobody stood up and said to the council members, you can't do this. It's unconstitutional. So, what you essentially did is passed an ordinance that has cost me and everybody else in this room probably upwards of $150,000, maybe $200,000, maybe more. We need an accounting of what it's cost in not only out-of-pocket costs for attorneys, court fees, police overtime, and enforcing this egregious act. I've been a journalist all my life. The past, I've been in radio and television the past 20-some years as an author. My livelihood depends on the First Amendment. You people didn't just bump it. You ran it over, backed up and ran it over again. It was a Kyle Schwaber 492-foot, out of the park, no doubter. The question is, what are you going to do to keep from doing that again? I need you to say that you will empower your city attorney, not to be in fear for his job, same for your city manager, but to stand up in public at a city council meeting and say, don't do that. It will cost the citizens of this county, of this city, a lot of money. It's blatantly unconstitutional. It will embarrass Punta Gorda nationwide. You can't just sit there and vote for it and ho-hum and walk around and say, well, we had to do it because people were asking us to do it. Mr. Levin and our city manager, you need to stand up and say, don't do that. And the city council needs to empower them to do that and know that they won't be held in fear of their jobs if they actually do that. The First Amendment is just about as important, more important than anything we could possibly be dealing with. You need to respect it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi. I'd like to say-
Your name, please.
Oh, my name is Jeff Lustig. And I'd like to thank Mr. Cummings' service on the City Council. He's always been accessible. The work that he did to push forward the codes, for the building codes, and to make us into the 21st century was really very helpful. And it's not unnoticed. He was always available to talk to and to discuss things. On another note, I worked for 40 years in New York City and there was a thing called the Small Claims Court that you, as a small business owner, was terrified to go into. You knew you were always going to lose when you went up there. But it allowed people to have the redress so that they feel that they were being taken care of. It made the business owner more amenable to settling any kind of conflicts. The reason why I say that is, it's the difference between theory and reality. In theory, I'm correct that the person didn't have a right to this merchandise or whatever. But in reality, you were going to lose and you were going to have to pay this money. The same is true with some of our ordinances. And what I'm concerned about is the ordinance of 15-48E, the recording, a recording of city workers. The recording is dependent on the city employee, if he wants to or not, to be recorded. And therefore, if the person, if the employee is, feels good about the recording, or that he's on the side of the individual who's making the recording, he will allow that for public view. But if he's not, he won't allow that. And therefore, you won't have the same time, place, and manner problems that you had with the other ordinance. The other thing is, is that there's a disconnect between patrol officers, body cams, and Marcy's law. And you need to address, the police can't delete those kinds of images or redact those. It's part of the city council or the, the people who work in the government to do that. And so, you need to look at how you can get those two things in order so that people's informations are protected in public. And again, thank you very much. And thank you for repealing the, the Section Z on that ordinance. That was very important to me. And I hope that we can avoid frivolous lawsuits in the future by being proactive and have the city attorney look at these things to see what potentially we could be sued for. Whoever thought that Roe v. Wade would be overturned, whoever thought that affirmative action was going to be overturned. It requires us to look at all of our ordinances again to see what our liability is. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Louis LaBarbara. And to speak on the unconstitutional sign ordinance, how are we going to keep that from happening again? And what are we going to do for the people that were negatively impacted? For example, Andrew Sheets, who was fined up to $5,000 due to this unconstitutional ordinance and a lien was put onto his house. He lost business and his name was defamed multiple times. What are we going to do to keep that from happening again? It has been brought to multiple people's attention. That was blatantly unconstitutional, whether it's to the council, to the police, and nobody did anything about it until Andrew Sheets took it to court. We had plenty of case law, for example, Cohen v. California, when it was said that, it was said that one man's lyric is a, no, one man's, damn it.
One man's curse words and another man's lyric.
Thank you. It's free speech. It, that's my supporting document would be the Constitution of the United States of America, the First Amendment, freedom of speech. What is in that ordinance had nothing to do with fighting words. It had nothing to do with inciting violence. It was blatantly unconstitutional, freedom of speech. What are you going to do to keep it from happening, happening again? That's what the people need to know. Because remember, you all took an oath and the police took an oath to serve the people. You need to let the people know how you're going to keep this unconstitutional, unconstitutionalities from happening again, to where it affects the people, especially someone like Andrew Sheets. He won his state trial and he's about, his federal case is about to be settled. And he was even arrested for free speech on public property. How are you going to keep that from happening again?
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address council? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes. And please line up and get in order to keep this meeting moving, please.
Good morning. Martha Russell Buretta.
Can you, can you please put the microphone right up to your mouth?
Yes.
These microphones are real sensitive.
Thank you. Martha Russell Buretta. All right. First of all, I am the Director of the Blanchard House Museum, which was the vision of my mother, Bernice Russell. And when we look at the kinds of comments that are always made about the museum, they make us very happy indeed. I'll just read you one of them. This was from a couple in 2017. "We visited the Blanchard House in December 2017 when we were touring Punta Gorda, Florida. Rich in history with photos, documents, and displays to educate and keep your interest. This museum is not to be missed." There are two proposals that will help us at the Blanchard House to expand, to be more than we are. We, we have been around since 2004. We were opened and then, of course, Charlie came. And then, we were open now. And then, Ian showed up again. So, we are closed for right now, but we are opening again. If you go to our Blanchard House Museum website, blanchardhousemuseum.org, you will see that we will be still working, still putting exhibits up. But what I'd like to just ask the City Council, to please support two new projects. One is the Blanchard House Institute. And this will be the expansion of the Blanchard House Museum through the preservation of the Jean Cleveland House. In that expansion, we, of course, will have a Cultural Heritage Center, a museum for children. And very, very important, we will be celebrating the historic Cochrane Street District. We will come up with best practices. We will have opportunities for young people to be involved in entrepreneurship. Growing up here in Punta Gorda, what I knew about the Cochrane Street District was its power and was its vitality. And with urban renewal changed things, changed, things changed. And of course, my community did not want those changes. We liked who we were. We liked the way that we served the entire city. So, I really ask your support. When the proposition comes up, the proposal for the expansion of the Blanchard House Museum, support it because the Blanchard House is very important in this city, in the state. I have even helped students from Europe do research on projects as they come to the Blanchard House. So, this will enhance what we do. We will add it as the Blanchard House Institute. Now, very exciting, the acknowledgement of Native American Heritage Month. That is very exciting. We, you will hear about the proclamation for the Seminole Maroon Freedom Trail. That is just amazing. In fact, because right here on Pine Island, we had a maroon village. Escaped enslaved people came from South Carolina, North Carolina, and Georgia to Florida. They could get across St. Mary's River. They were free in Florida. And these individuals hooked up with the Creek Indians and established-
Thank you. Time's up.
-almost done. Established the Seminole Maroon Freedom Trail. Your support of this will again put Punta Gorda out in front-
Your time is up.
...as a place where the people should come and visit. And it is time for us to acknowledge the unique sociology that we are and that we will continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. My name's Dave Kalen. Here to speak on Item 8D, which references the sign ordinance. I'd like to start by thanking you for giving the time to speak. Many of you, as elected officials, have taken the oath of office, which is to defend the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. That is, the first role of government is to protect the people under the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. When we look at the sign ordinance and what it has created over the past duration of its enactment, has been just nothing short of shameful. As we move forward, I would encourage each one of you to consider this very carefully. Because just 54 short years ago, a black Baptist pastor was assassinated for his political views and free speech. Speech that is now accepted and cherished in our heritage as Americans and African-Americans, that we are all equal, wasn't so just 60 years ago. So, I would encourage every one of you to seriously consider, as you move forward with the sign ordinance and what it has done to our community, the divisiveness of it. And let's work to pull ourselves together and not divide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ken Rolland. And I've submitted an application to-
For Board of Committee, we will have that in just a few minutes, soon as citizen comments are done.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Please move the mic down directly in front of you, please.
I'll be better the next time here. Okay, Patricia Niles Gateway Point. With regard to today's meeting, there's been a lot of what, what I look at and listen to and hear is, it can be also seen, as I see it, as tough love. Where sometimes you hear things that, in all good faith, in all good honesty, in your hearts of which you wish for this city, and how things end up turning out with regard to how our process works. And the other one that I get kind of a kick out of is the Huey helicopter. I remember when this place was filled with veterans and it was kind of wondering where we were going to do with that. And look what happened through our process that we have here in our country of how we do speak up and how we do listen and muddle through. Sometimes it's muddling through. With regard to today, I'd like to speak about choosing development with and versus hurricanes and that old Mother Nature doesn't care. And for me, as a concerned voting resident, I will be seriously following the money, how much this is going to cost us, this hurricane. I've been through myself through two of them. And my parents went through a third. And so, this isn't one of those, we are not in a, in an area where it's one, one in 100 years. So, I think we should be honest with ourselves. So, I'll be following the- So I'll be following the money, and I'm also gonna follow how long does it take for our community to get back to where we were. So this is gonna be a process for all of us and a lot of compassion and understanding and hard work to get through this. I'd also like to quickly mention about those who haven't voted yet. I still suggest that you keep the city councils for the next six years for two years instead of four. Doesn't reflect on any of you. It has to review again with process. It gives the charter review committee a chance to give all of us a report card, including the citizens and the businesses and all of us, not just the city council, and how we relate to one another in these next six years in getting through and making a comeback. So I cannot support four-year terms. I see what happens with our Charlotte County Commissioners. So I'm against that. And the other, of course, is the referendum with regard to casinos in Charlotte Harbor. A point of note here that we all should be paying attention to is Allegiant Travel. The head of Sunseekers is going to have its Third Quarter Earnings Conference Call this afternoon at 4:30. Please pay attention to that meeting. It will affect all of us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Wendy Mueller. Bet you thought I was gonna talk about freedom, but I'm not. I just wanna thank everybody, the Public Works Division, the offices, the council, the attorney, and the city manager. I cannot believe that we've come back so quickly, so organized, and cleaned up. I just wish some of these people had been here. Not that I want you to have been here, but the difference between Charlie and Ian is phenomenal, and we owe it to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole Christian, Port Charlotte. How many citations were given out for sign ordinance violations since certain language was codified as forbidden? Do any of you know?
This is not Q and A.
It's not Q and A? All right. I wonder how many people were jailed as a result of it? On July 27, 2021, the board was advised via email about the necessity of respecting and protecting Americans' right to protest and free speech. What changed your minds to jail people after that? For signs? For political expression in a public forum? I wonder how many on the board have never used the F-bomb in their lives? I know last year, one of your members admitted to using it in golf, a game. Why is it okay to use it to play golf, but it's not okay to use it when you're expressing deeply held political beliefs? I wonder why we're forbidding the use of words when the next step would be to use weapons of war? If you can't have a civil discourse, as Thomas Jefferson warned us, if truth is not able to be combated in the public forum, then it leads people to violence. I wanna go on record as saying that I think it's a crime to limit the number of political signs that Pontagorda Americans can put in their own yards to support candidates that they believe in. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is James McLeanis, and I'm here to speak about the signed ordinance, of course. I personally, and millions of other people just like me, consider the First Amendment and the United States Constitution to be the most important thing that separates our country from everybody else. Putin's locking people up right now for protesting the war. He's got a big misinformation campaign. If you try and tell the truth, you get put in jail. And a lot of people look at that and they say, "That's terrible. That's terrible." But this city council is doing the exact same thing. You're not like the Wizard of Oz. You're not little Pusians. You're little Putin's. You have to understand that one of the things that makes this country great is the ability to say what we wanna say, when we wanna say it, any way we wanna say it. And people like you do not have the right to tell us we can't. The Constitution guarantees that. And you worry about how did we... You wonder how you got into this big mess. This big mess started several years ago when people started protesting your police that were overly abusive and heavy-handed in what they were doing. And in a lot of ways, very corrupt. And people started monitoring that, following that, videotaping them, and seeking public records. When they came to seek public records, you guys all played this Title X, Chapter 119, violate their rights by making them pay exorbitant fees for every single record. Every single thing needed to be redacted when it didn't. You withheld records intentionally from these people requesting records. And then, in order for them to enforce the law, Title X, Chapter 119, they have to sue you. But in order to sue you, they have to prove that you did not give them the records they asked for. And to do that, they needed to videotape asking for the records. So what did you do then? You made it a crime to videotape inside public building. You told people coming to pick up the records that you can't videotape you asking for the records, which is a violation of Title X, Chapter 119. It's a crime. You can't put a condition on the release of public records, and you did that. And when that wasn't enough, these people got angrier and they went out and started protesting. You created the Ian McGuires and the Andrew Sheets of the world by trying to suppress people's rights. And every time you try and do that, it's gonna get worse and worse and worse for you. You are gonna be sued many more times than this. You're gonna cost all these people hundreds of thousands of dollars by your own arrogance. And your attorney, Levine, he sat before you in these meetings and he lied to you. And he told you that Cohen versus California supported it when any idiot could see that that lawsuit was about what you can say on the radio, not what you can say on a public sidewalk. He led you down that dark path because that's what you wanted to hear. The first thing that you should do to straighten out this mess is fire him because he lied to you. And then after he lied to you, he told you he could support this in court. And then he took all the taxpayers' money to go fight it. And now you're where you are today, and he's still supporting it. You've gotten bad advice from a bad attorney, and you need to do something about that. But the bottom line is, the more you try and squeeze First Amendment, the more it's gonna blow up in your face. You don't realize that yet, but would I just say last closing argument to all of you, and especially to you, Mr. Karski, the "I won't back down"? Fuck you.
Yep. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address council before we move on? Last call. If you've spoken once, you cannot speak a second time. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak?
Also, I would like to be cut when that means...
Excuse me. You're out of order, sir.
Then they turn the light...
You're out of order.
You are corrupt and you will be sued multiple times.
Yep. We will address it. Okay. We do have a couple of folks in the audience that have submitted their names for a border committee. If you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself, please come to the podium. State your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
I didn't know there was a separate part.
That's okay.
It's okay.
I just wanna give you special recognition for you guys who come.
Okay, good morning. I'm Ken Rolland. I'm a resident of Pontagorda Isles. We've been here 22 years now. I am a licensed real estate broker. And winding down that business and wanna get involved more in the community on a personal level, as well as I can add some experiences that I think will be helpful in the conduct of business of this committee. And I don't know what else to say. Maybe the council has questions about me?
No, this is your turn to introduce yourself. That's all.
Okay, well, I think I did.
There you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. I'm Jaclyn Pascoe, and I'm currently serving as an alternate on the Historical Preservation Advisory Committee. And I would be interested in serving in a regular seat. And I think that everyone that comes to this town, as a resident in this town, should step up and do service here. And I feel that it's service to the town and also in something that you're interesting, interested in. So this is interesting to me, and I love this town. I've been a resident for, oh goodness, we came to Pontagorda in 2017. So I'm in Pontagorda Isles with my husband and my dogs, and I'd like to continue being involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Can you hear me? This is gonna be an easy one. Everybody take a deep breath, smile, it's gonna be okay. Just wanna introduce myself. My name is Harry Wahlberg, and I submitted an application to be on the PGI Canal Advisory Committee. I've lived here for 12 years with my wife. We love Pontagorda. We enjoy boating, and we love living on the water. I have a... I can't believe I have to have notes on myself, but I do. Prior to moving here, I lived in Long Island, New York, and I've been active in boating since I was 10 years of age. I have a keen interest in keeping our waterways safe, clean, and properly maintained to provide for ease of navigation. I'm also a member of the Charlotte County Alligator Creek Waterway Advisory Committee. I think it's a benefit to have somebody that's on both committees. This way, we can share information, share plans, share our directives, and just make the two waterways, two water systems work properly together. Appreciate, and I'm willing to serve and hope I get selected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to introduce themselves as a candidate for a border committee seat?
I think Chance up there has been saying something. You can hear him whining a little bit.
No, Chance? Our therapy dog. We need him to... Okay. Since there are no additional people coming forward, we will adjourn as the city council and reconvene as Community Redevelopment Agency.
Mayor, before I relinquish my seat for the CRA member, there's an item on the General City Council Consent Agenda, item 7E, which is an invoice for services that were rendered on behalf of the CRA. That item needs to be brought forward to the CRA instead of being on the city council's consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll add 7E to the Number Four Agenda.
I think it already is on the... I think it was just duplicated. Isn't 4C the same thing as 7E?
4C is the project list.
4C says... My agenda says invoice of Icard Meryl.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's a duplicate.
My agenda's different. Okay.
Yeah, so was mine, so...
Okay. Okay, all right. So it's already been moved, then we don't need to...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
He looks steady.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. I'll give Mr. Murray a minute. Are you all set and ready to go over there, sir? I think you go by the agenda that's on my screen and not my paper. All right, we'll begin. We are now in session as the Community Redevelopment Agency. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment on any of the agenda items on the CRA agenda only, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move ahead. First item is approval of minutes from the September 7, 2022 meeting.
Move approve the minutes of the September 7 session?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 7 meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number 4C is the invoice of Icard Meryl, Cullis, Tim, Ferran, and Ginsburg for legal services from September... rendered through September 30, 2022, in the amount of $8,250.
Move approve and pay the bill.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the invoice for Icard Meryl. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 4D is the project status report, and that is Mr. Murray. You're up.
Thank you. I'd like to speak a little bit about a couple of the projects, but first, we'll go over the Marina data. We had the September information, but I'll go right to the October information. You can see that in October, post-storm, we had annual rentals still of 25, semi-annual of 2. Our monthlies are still holding in the range of 20. Transience was up a little bit after the storm. We did have a lot of in-and-out, pre-and-post Ian, of course. And the moorings that we have out there right now are four. A lot of the boats that were moored in the harbor were moved to secure anchorage. So we don't have all of those back yet. We have one livable board that's still under our program for livable boards. Many of those are then moving to monthly, if able, into additional or other slips that comply with our submerged land lease. And the community room, of course, we won't be seeing any usage of that for paid community room because due to storm damage in our main office complex, we have offices that are moved into that community room temporarily. When we look at our pump-out vessel, you can see in October, we declined substantially. We had 900 gallons pumped in any 4.5 miles. Of course, most of that is because we had boats that were not at anchor on our mooring balls and also moving in and out of the marina itself. When we look at our quarterly grant reporting, though, we did have 282 vessels that were serviced, 16 of which were out-of-state registration. We had 298 total, 414 miles, and over 7,000 gallons that was pumped and helped protect Charlotte Harbor by proper disposal at no cost to the vessel owner. So we're very pleased we're still able to do that. When we look at some of our projects, just as a general update, the Historic City Hall rehabilitation, we did meet with the consultant in October. There were impacts from Hurricane Ian. The 60% plans, we originally anticipated to have October 5. Of course, they have offices that are local also and had impact on their offices. But in addition to that, they do wanna conduct additional building assessments now to ensure that any damage that occurred from Hurricane Ian to Historic City Hall would be added into their design concepts, if indeed that was needed. So they'll finish those evaluations, and then we'll be back on track to get the 60% plans in. By the time we get the plans in, have third-party review permits from the state, everything back to the consultant, and then put it out for bid, get contractor onboard. We should be well on the way to having staff back into their primary offices so that it doesn't impact the construction schedule itself. So we're still basically on track with the project, with the consultant. So when we look at Gilchrist Park Harbor Walk Phase II, which it appears we're not going to look at... No, there it is. So when we look at Phase II, the contractor's been moving along quite nicely, actually. Even post-storm, they were immediately back and cleaning up the storm damage. Unfortunately, on the bottom right, some of the nice trees that you see that were planted are no longer planted. They're now in the wind, so to speak. So many of those were laying over and had to be replaced, but the contractor's done a nice job of that. They cleaned up all the damage on their site from the hurricane. They've been installing diagonal pavers, continuing to move the parking up the street. They've had some base put down for new parking areas. They continue to move forward on the project. There's a little bit of a delay due to equipment and tree damage on the playground for that part of the opening. We do have at least two of the major structures. You can see the little pirate ship and different things as you drive by. You can see that that's still damaged, so we'll have to work on that and getting some of the big trees... in getting some of the big tree debris out of there. But other than that, the landscaping, the pavers, the parking areas continue to move along, and actually, the project is moving along still quite nicely. Which brings us to AC Freeman House, the AC Freeman House rehabilitation. We have a draft scope for the construction manager at risk completed. That's being reviewed by the Florida Department of Historic Resources. We're still waiting on all the designations to see where that falls out. We did have some additional damage, a small amount that was a hole in the side of the building that was immediately remediated, so it's plugged up and we don't have any additional damage. Once we get our C-MAR onboard, we're going to then look at our funding sources and how it's designated, if it is on Historic Register, and bring that back to council so we can discuss the ultimate use of the structure. That use, then, what it requires as far as remediation and new construction, and then, given that, what it may cost, and given that cost, where the funding may come from. So there's a large discussion there, A, B, C, D, that has to come back to council so that we can then move forward with the rehab of the AC Freeman House. When we look at Lashley Spark, Spark Pad, Lashley Park Splash Pad, we do have the contract awarded to Gordian for construction. Of course, city council approved that September 7th city council meeting. We will be looking for their final, with the subs, their final schedule so that they can begin the construction. Of course, everything's been delayed a little bit by the storm. Of course, before, it was all delayed by COVID. Now we can say it was delayed by the storm, so at least there's a reason. So we have to wait until we get that in, and then we are ready to begin construction of that splash pad. So that'll be a very nice thing. We already have, of course, the equipment in that we had pre-purchased so that we could lock the price and have it on-site when we were ready. So when that starts construction, it'll be down for a while, but when it's complete, we'll have a ribbon cutting, and everyone can play in the water, and it'll be a very nice splash pad that we have in Punta Gorda.
Only him.
He can get under the bucket first.
He's gonna get his bucket of water.
So we are moving forward with those, and of course, the remaining projects in the CRA itself, just in general. A lot of cleanup has occurred. We're still moving forward with the cleanup in that zone. We're looking at more construction and demolition debris now because much of the yard debris, vegetative-type debris, has been cleaned at least one pass, and then we'll be going back through with the CRA itself. We're still working on things like the Herald Court Center. There was some damage there that we're working on. Of course, Bayfront Center was generally a total loss. But Herald Court, you'll notice there's some doors that are missing on the bottom of Herald Court Center. That's never been locked 24/7, so the doors are missing because the storm sprung the hinges and required new hinges doors and frame in some case. And if you do have them closed the way they close when people come down the stairwells, they get to the bottom and can't get out. So it's interesting to watch, but not a good idea. We do have those off so that the stairwells are accessible, and that when people park, they do have that means of egress so it remains safe if indeed the elevator were not working, there were a fire or something, we need a way out. And all the stairwells are open and ready for that use. So that's it for now. Thank you.
Any questions?
Greg, I do. We have two vessels in the park that are abutting our city property.
Yes. The vessels themselves, our PD has been watching that. We have the 45-day rule where 45 days, we can't do anything until the owners of the vessels have an opportunity to take all means necessary to move and salvage their vessels. After that, we can start looking if they're derelict vessels, but then there's a notification process that you go through for that also before you can actually take action and get someone in to move something. If there's things that are happening, such as, we did have some mangrove issues, and there were some different things that a couple of the vessels there actually caused, we've taken action to make sure that that was mitigated and corrected. But the boats themselves, we can't yet touch. But we do have them on the list, and when the time comes, we'll be able to take further action.
Was that the same rationale with the vessel over at the other park, where just part of the superstructure was removed, but we still have the hole in the water?
That's a little different. That one, there, now that the storm hit, there's a rationale that comes into play. But we did, because of the size of that vessel, we had to bid that one out. It didn't come under our normal removal and salvage contract. We had that bid out and ready to actually remove the vessel, storm hit. So now the vessel's under a different criteria. But we do have people that now are, have submitted and are under contract or will be so that they can remove that size of vessel that's full of water like that. So that one, again, is similar now that the storm hit, but in general, it didn't fall under our normal contract because of the size, so we had to go out for a special contract for that.
Greg, thank you.
I have a question. A resident asked me yesterday, do we have available docks and/or mooring balls at Lashley Marina right now?
Available for...
For people to come in with a transient boat.
For a transient boat, yes, we do.
I ask because there is a, there's a group of several dozen Great Loop boaters that are coming down the west coast of Florida, and they were going to go to Fort Myers Beach, and they will possibly be looking for temporary mooring. And so I wanted to find out how many mooring balls and how many available slips we might have if they decide to stop in.
I will need to verify how many we have, but I will certainly do that. Let you know.
Any other questions for Mr. Murray? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner comments from Mr. Kuharsky. Mrs. Carey?
Gentlemen, I have enjoyed my time on the CRA serving with both of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Drager?
I'm just pleased with how quickly the city did clean up the CRA area, and I can't believe how quickly life returned back to normal. Down there, people going to the restaurants, listening to the music, and getting back to normal. Makes me very happy, and I am glad to have served with Debbie.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, I concur. This has been an incredibly quick cleanup, and I thank everyone once again on the city staff and all of our volunteers and all of the crews that are working very tediously around the clock. The Howard the Holler guy and all of his people are working seven days a week, and they were at my house at 7:00 Monday morning picking up what debris was left on my street. They started on Sunday at like 4:00 in the afternoon, and they filled the truck before they got to my house. My husband's like, "Oh no, they can't leave, they can't leave." But they came back the next morning. So we're very happy to have the debris removed. I'm sure everybody else is too, who has had theirs taken away. So we thank everybody. Mr. Counsel?
I did all of the, all of the comments on the, on the great efforts to remove debris. I was over at, well, actually, both parks yesterday, and particularly at Gilchrist, impressed with the, with the condition of it, very surprising. Hopefully, we can have an official reopening of that in the not-too-distant future.
Loving today.
Mr. Cummings?
Gentlemen, wonderful serving with you, and also thank you to the staff for wonderful effort.
Okay, great, thank you. We have no further business, so we are adjourned, and we will reconvene as city council. Thank you, guys. And as stated earlier, we will move up agenda item 8, get here, 8A, which is legislative priorities discussion with our lobbyists. We are back in session as city council. Okay.
Give back to, certainly, we've had a discussion on what our legislative priorities may be. We have our lobbyist here, Roe, if you'd just, yep, thank you, to help facilitate discussion. There have been some comments on what may be good items for us to pursue. There have been some questions about the control we may have over rental units. There's been the EOC and fire and rescue information, of course, all the water quality initiatives, things that we had on last year's letter to our delegation, which included septic-to-sewer, which is a very large lift. Even if we did get some money, there's a large remaining amount for that unless we got a substantial allocation that we would need to be able to come up with. And of course, any water quality initiatives that helps support the goals of improvement of water quality in Charlotte Harbor and the canals themselves. Those type of water quality initiatives are always on the forefront. We have a large wastewater treatment plant project that, of course, we have some funding for even through state revolving loan fund, but that project is 70 to 80 million dollars. That's a very large lift to help comply with state regulations, not necessarily increasing capacity substantially, but it does take the capacity we have, make sure the plant can manage it properly, given our peak loads that we have, and also then improves the quality of the discharge that right now goes down a very deep hole. But, you know, someone's always downstream. So those type of things are some of the items that were discussed and that we may want to bring forward to our delegation. With that, I would just ask counsel what your thoughts are on items that we may be looking at so that our lobbyists could help us pinpoint some of the opportunities that may exist, and anything that you may have insight of what the legislature itself may be looking at that gives us the highest opportunity for success. These type of general discussions so that we can start to finalize our legislative agenda for December, I believe it is.
It's actually been moved to January.
January.
I just found that out yesterday, so I don't have the date yet, but it has been pushed forward to January.
Are we able to blame that on the storm? It's another Ian thing. Roe, if you would, just introduce yourself to counsel again. Of course, we have the last meeting of this council. Next time you're in front of us, there'll be a new council. But everyone's in the room, so it's good information for everyone to hear.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me here today, and thank you for moving me up in your agenda. I appreciate that, so I can make my flight home to Tallahassee. I'm Rosanna Catalano. I'm your lobbyist. I'm with Anfield Consulting. I've worked with you all, I think we're going on about five years now. So wonderful group to work with, and I'm excited to represent you all at the state Capitol. Greg brought to my attention some of the concerns that you all have and some of the things that you wanted to put on your legislative agenda. I think they're all wonderful things, powerful things. One of the things I do wanna keep impressed to you is that priority at the Capitol is usually given to things that have statewide impact. So I think many of these do sort of check that box that Greg brought to my attention. And then I think after statewide impact, I think the legislature looks at, are you working? Is it a regional project? Is it something that a group, several communities, are working on? And I think those are how the funds are given out if you're looking for an appropriation. I do think with regards to vacation rentals, I think that is something that obviously we would always monitor for you all and keep you apprised with regards to vacation rentals. And if there's any changes in the statutory language with regards to those, we would keep you up to dated, updated. Out of the list that I receive with regards to water quality initiatives and emergency operations center, I do think that with regard to your water quality, I think there is a stronger case that could be made, obviously, for statewide impact. But they are a bigger, heavier lift and a much larger amounts, most likely, that you're looking at. But I take my guidance from you all as to what you would like us to pursue.
I realize that you touched on this, but I would like to weigh in on something. I think probably I get more complaints about rentals than any one other single item, except maybe Comcast. But what I think, what I'd really like, if there was some way for you to help us figure out how to tell our legislature that this is not a one-size-fits-all state. And that particular legislation is based on one-size-fitting-all. I did a little history into it, and it basically came about because there was one area that was not allowed to do this, and so therefore, they wiped out the reasonability for the entire state. And, you know, we have a very unique situation in Punta Gorda, and we really, our quality of life goes down during Airbnb season.
I would echo those comments. That is the number-one complaint that I get from citizens, and it is not, while it is, and this is a, this is a retirement community, let's face it. And people want peace and quiet, and they don't wanna be, and not every Airbnb is bad. I mean, I have Airbnbs in my neighborhood that people complain to me about, and most of the times, they're just fine. But every once in a while, you get a big party house going in there, you know, and that's, that's just not right. And this is not just a regional issue, because when we were over in Hollywood, Florida, I found out that you can Google this, and there's a, there's an effort over there that they're trying to overturn that as well. And people also don't understand how this, because there are municipalities that can regulate it. And the reason they can regulate it is because they were grandfathered. They had an ordinance prior to, so people, people don't get it. They don't understand why can they do it and why can't we do it. And my only answer is that, that all you can do is code them to death. You, I mean, make sure they have a business license, because if they're not, if they don't have a business license, they're not paying their taxes. That's tax fraud, okay? So you can get them on that. You can, you can, you can code them on every single little thing, but then that, that puts the burden on our citizens to constantly have to, to report, and, and they can't do it anonymously anymore, to report, and then on our police department and our code enforcement people to have to go out there and check this. And it's just, it's just, it's not right, it's not fair. It isn't the same way all across the state. And, and it, it's something that I would like to not have just reported on. We need to start moving and, and get the municipalities that have this issue together, and let's start moving it forward. Let's not just report on it passively.
I don't disagree with any of that, and I think if you take a look at some of the legislation that's currently on the ballot this fall for other municipalities, I believe it's Marco Island has a major movement going on that have a ballot issue on the referendum on this ballot with regard to short-term rentals. And I don't know all the details on it because it's changed a few times since it was first proposed, but I, but I do believe that they left that on the ballot. So I'm gonna be anxious to learn more about that and find out exactly what they're trying to accomplish because they have a huge amount of short-term rentals in Marco Island, and also in Naples, for that matter. But, but I know that they're trying to give their residents the peace of mind again because that has become a real problem, so that is definitely something we wanna look at. Jaha?
Wanted to come back to the emergency operations center. Reason is, the first few days of this storm in particular, we're running back and forth like crazy people, and I think it's worth having someone step there. But I think having the center, especially that there's a nice piece of land right next to our public safety that is viable, and the reason why I say it's viable, while I'm still on council, I can get the regional planning council to actually write a grant for this. And why this is important is that the Economic Development Administration out of the Department of Commerce actually provides 50% grants. So you're looking at in terms of matching, that's there. But in hurricanes, they give 80%. The airport actually got 80% grant for one of its big investments recently after the last storm. So I'm thinking for the EOC, the time is now, specifically because of the hurricane, and the regional planning council could actually get in front of that to make it, quote, "a regional project." So I think that's a viable one.
Okay.
And I'll just mention, you're right about the property, because I mentioned that to Roe, that there's a piece of property next door, and we also have a project in the works for a public safety center that if we tie that public safety center project with money that's potentially funded for that project and the property that may be available, and then additional grants that may help harden some type of EOC as opposed to what we have now and where we have to work. Even if we go to the county EOC, that could, you know, possibly turn into something that could be very positive.
One thing I did wanna mention, as we've gone around the state and met with our incoming leaders at the Florida Capitol, one of the issues that is going to be addressed this session and probably next session session and probably next session is affordable housing. So, I'm not sure if you have anything that falls under that umbrella or in that basket, but I did want to make sure that you're aware that that is going to be an area that the legislature will be active in and opening statutes on in the next two years.
If I could speak to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Our public housing units in Punta Gorda, the first two assessments were done of Oak Tree Village and Gulf Shore Estates. We've had over fourteen million dollars' worth of damage done to those buildings. The deductible is going to be in the millions. And HUD is kind of dragging their feet, because I don't think they realize how bad a storm this was. And we can't send pictures of buildings that are down like they were during Charlie, because the damage seems to have all been through the roofs and through soffits. So, you know, if there's ever a need for extra supplemental ship money or whatever we can get, Punta Gorda Housing Authority needs to be high on the list.
Anyone else?
The water quality objectives that we talked about, many of those were on last year's letter that was submitted, that was included in the package just for reference. Some of those that were on last year were, for example, the million dollars for the force main that we put out Riverside that would be able to take several point sources out of Charlotte Harbor, because they could then tie into public sewer instead of the mobile home parks, for example, that have their own treatment plant but still has a discharge point. I know the state's trying to get rid of many of those, and that would help accomplish that goal. Also ties in with our treatment plan upgrade. So, those are still on there. The other ones that we discussed were the ones that were brought up from individual council members. That was an area of concern, like the EOCs and the rentals, short-term rentals especially. And even if we have an opportunity to put a comment on, if we can't get any traction, it starts the process of showing what some of our issues are and making sure that we keep that in front of the legislators, legislators themselves. So, what we'd like to do is try to come up with some of the points that we could then flesh out and put together as far as our presentation to the legislators. If you have any specific items that even from this discussion or prior discussions that you'd like to see on that list to make sure we get there, obviously, it sounds like some comment about short-term rentals or something with that may be one. From water quality, we still, from last year, have the Septic to Sewer project, which we could at least get comment back on where that may go. Is there anything else?
And then I have the EOC, yeah. So, I have the EOC, the water quality with regards to Septic to Sewer, and then I also have the vacation rentals as the three that have been elevated in this discussion.
That's a star.
Okay. Well, I, I'm happy to work with Greg. He's a slew of information, as you all know, and he can help us with regards to flushing out the, the real nitty-gritty as well as the amounts that we're looking at.
And even when we met with Senator Albritton before, you know, with his water quality initiatives, he had talked about, excuse me, some money to be able to model what Charlotte Harbor looks like, even some comments that support that goal. Because if we know what the issue is, and then when we have a project, we know how much of that issue it mitigates, and we can quantify a reduction in contaminant load, for example, nitrogen, phosphor, whatever it may be, then we can actually ask for money, and we can quantify what that money's going to do for local and state as far as improvement. Without that, you're kind of just saying, yep, this is nice, because we know Septic to Sewer will take septic tanks out and put in public sewer. Well, great, what's that do for the harbor? What's it do for the canals? What's it do locally? Well, we don't know, because we don't have a model that shows that. And I know Senator Albritton was very interested in making that happen. And if he still is, and I know he's very big on water quality, maybe some comments that say we support those initiatives at least would, or anything that ties in with county initiatives that are water quality-driven.
He's, he's very focused on water quality. That has been his focus for the time that he's been in the legislature. The way the legislature has done these projects in the past has been piecemeal, these water projects. And he's trying to look at it from sort of a ten-thousand-foot view.
More global.
He's done a lot of research on it, and obviously, his star is rising within the legislature. So, the timing, too, for water quality projects, I think your timing is good as well.
And, you know, they're always asking, as you well know, more than me, but what are the outcomes of funding they provide? If it's a training center like last year, how's that going to help the local community? What's it going to do for training? Quantify the outcomes of that. So, water quality is no different. If you can quantify the end result, then the funding level is much more likely.
Yes.
Okay. I think you've got at least a start.
Okay. We'll get to work. Thank you so much for your time. And obviously, my, you can always reach me on my cell if you all have any questions or anything outside this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for making the trip. We appreciate you being here.
All right. All right. So, the next three public hearings are quasi-judicial. If there is anyone in the audience that will be speaking on any of these three agenda items, this would be AX-03-2022, CP-03-2022, and PD-03-2022. Please stand now and be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
[inaudible].
When you approach the podium, please state your name and indicate that you have been sworn. Mayor, the first item on the agenda is AX-03-2022, which is the second reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of Punta Gorda, Florida, annexing within the municipal limits of Punta Gorda, eleven-point-zero plus or minus acres, located in Charlotte County, Florida, addressed as thirty-two-hundred and thirty-two-forty Cooper Street, as more particularly described in Exhibit A in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes. Redefining the boundary lines of said city in conformance therewith, amending the official boundary map of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, directing the city clerk to provide certified copies of this ordinance to the Charlotte County Clerk of Court, Charlotte County Administrator, Florida Department of State, and Florida Office of Economic and Demographic Research, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Good morning, Lisa Han, and I, zoning official, and I have been sworn. We're just here if you have any questions. This is the second reading.
Okay. Any questions for staff before we open the hearing? Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this hearing, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and that you've been sworn, and you will have three minutes. Does anyone wish to speak on this hearing? Please come forward. Last call. Anyone wish to speak on this hearing? Please come forward.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve AX-03-2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve AX-03-2022. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have CP-03-2022. Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending the City of Punta Gorda Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map to include newly annexed lands, amending the future land use map to reflect the change in the current designation of low-intensity industrial slash county to light industrial slash city for eleven-point-o plus or minus acres, being more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here, too, and incorporated herein, and addressed as thirty-two-hundred and thirty-two-forty Cooper Street, Punta Gorda, Florida, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Again, good morning, Lisa Han, and zoning official, and I have been sworn, since this is the second reading. We're here for any questions you may have.
Questions for staff?
None.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this issue, please come forward, state your name for the record, that you've been sworn in, and you will have three minutes. Does anyone wish to speak on this hearing? Please come forward. Last call. Does anyone wish to speak on this hearing? Please come forward.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve CP-03-2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CP-03-2022. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And next, we have PD-03-2022.
Yes, this also is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of Punta Gorda, Florida, rezoning properties generally described as thirty-two-hundred and thirty-two-forty Cooper Street, Punta Gorda, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here, too, containing eleven-point-zero plus or minus acres, from its current Charlotte County zoning classification of industrial general to City of Punta Gorda Planned Employment Centers Special Purpose Planned Development Zoning District, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Good morning, Lisa Han, and zoning official, and I have been sworn. Again, the second reading, requesting approval.
Comments? Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on PD-03-2022, please come forward, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue, please come forward. Last call. Does anyone wish to speak on this hearing? Please come forward.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve PD-03-2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve PD-03-2022. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is GA-06-2022.
Yes, this is a legislative ordinance, second reading of the ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending the provisions of Chapter Seventeen, Public Utilities, Article Roman numeral One, General Provisions, Water Rates, and Article Roman numeral Two, Use of Public and Private Sewers and Drains, Sewer Rates, Punta Gorda Code to Increase Monthly Utility Rates, Providing for Conflict and Severability and Providing an Effective Date.
Kristen Samien, Finance Director. This is also a second reading for the utility rate increase as proposed during the budget process to be effective October, November first, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. This does not require a public hearing, so all we need is a motion.
Move to approve GA-06-2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve GA-06-2022. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have six B.
Yes, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, authorizing the city manager to grant two days of paid personal time off to all city employees in addition to all other paid time off, to which they are otherwise entitled, and providing an effective date.
And with this one, I'd like to add that that's a one-time benefit of two days off. It's not an annual benefit.
Mark?
That was what I was going to mention. That was brought to my attention, that it could be interpreted that this was an ongoing thing. It's a one-time only.
Right.
Debbie?
I just want to go on the record as saying that my entire team felt it should be two weeks, just so you guys know.
I, I had a few that were going for more than two days as well. But I think, I think this is just the least we can do for all the employees who have really put their heart and soul into this city in the past month and a half. And we're eternally grateful to all of you who really, really brought the city back to life in a very short time. So, very grateful to you.
So...
The only comment my group has is they just want to make sure that not everybody takes off days all at once, all together, because, you know, the city would fall. So, just make sure of that.
And that's why it's up to the city manager to oversee that.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for authorizing the city manager to grant two days, days off, of paid, personal paid time off to all city employees for hurricane relief efforts. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And thank you all very much. Okay. Consent agenda. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything on consent?
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, could we?
Yeah, we're going, I think we're going to take a ten-minute break before we get into the regular agenda. So, we will be back at forty.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, you can have some cookies.
There's in no one's mind, there is no addition of Cochran Street Business District. It existed already. It is not something that has to be added. It exists currently.
And why are we talking about it?
I'm a bit confused and my comments were addressed to the requirements that the city council has regarding the preparation of an agenda. And quite frankly, right now, I'm looking at three different forms of the agenda. There was an agenda that was in my packet that I picked up on Monday that has under regular agenda, paragraph eight, item eight B and eight C, which first eight A, eight B says city's support for resolution to be added to the November sixteenth agenda in support of the addition of historic Cochran Street Business District. The resolution, the agenda that I picked up this morning that was out on the counter on the table doesn't even have the two items that were on the agenda that I picked up earlier. And the mayor has an agenda that is, I guess.
The one I have here.
This is correct.
I have right here. It has eleven two two twenty-two. A resolution proposed city council supporting the addition of historic Cochran Street Business District and then a resolution inside, part of the agenda packet, it is a resolution to the city council of City Pontagorda, supporting the addition of the historic Cochran Street Business District located in the Pontagorda Historic District to the National Black Wall Street Trail and otherwise provide respect therefore. Again, no one's opening their item. This is in the agenda for today.
I have the item open right here.
So do I.
And it is exactly what I read here. I'm not opposed to this at all, but I did not follow the process. And this really isn't any different than the resolution that I've tried to put forth at the last meeting regarding the additional two days. And I was required, I read it in to the record, and I asked it to be put on the agenda today. And we voted, we discussed and vote on today. So I mean, there is a process and a procedure to follow. And I just think, and I think that's why, I don't think the HPAB, HPAB voted it down. They just said it's not following the process.
No, but it's not within their purview. This is, but see, this has been brought forward to staff weeks ago. This, 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 this was mislabeled at the last meeting.
This was not brought to the council, Jahah. That's the process.
Right. It was, it was brought, no, I brought it to staff to bring to council and it was missed, it was put improperly on the agenda.
Where was it put?
This, this thing which now exists for today's agenda is proper. It should have been at the last meeting and it was not done properly.
May I ask you a question, just so we can kind of get through it? The last meeting where you left early.
Yes.
At the end, you had something on your, for comments.
Right.
Was that this?
That, that was that.
Okay.
But, but it was mislabeled. It was wrong. So, so there's no point. That's why I didn't move it.
Well, well, not, not really. So, okay, you left.
Yes.
We discussed it.
But we didn't discuss this.
For what we knew.
Because it was not included properly. It was improperly.
Okay, well, I can't help you left the meeting early, Jahah. My, my, my question is.
The item was added incorrectly.
We discussed what was on your comments that you were not here to talk about.
The resolution was not attached. Otherwise.
It was under your comments.
Resolution was not attached to it. It would, it would not have been misunderstood if it would have been labeled properly.
So, so my concern as the city attorney is simply that the public be given proper notice as to what is on the agenda so that they could be available to make whatever public comments they wish to make with respect to the item. Now again, this is the agenda packet that I picked up on Monday and the item in the packet, the title says, and this is the agenda document itself, city's support for the resolution to be added to the November sixteenth agenda in support of addition of the historic Cochran Street Business District. Anyone who took the time to review the agenda in preparation for today's meeting and would review the agenda packet would think that November sixteenth was the date that they should appear just to make their comments with respect to the resolution.
The agenda's been revised since that. That was not what was, the agenda right now, what was on the agenda after one from Monday, was council's discussion and approval of the resolution to support the addition of the historic Cochran Street Business District. And inside it has the resolution. That is what was on the agenda.
Melissa.
If, if I understand the process, realistically, we can discuss this today, but we can discuss it to put on the agenda for next time, to have a resolution to vote on it, correct? That's usually, kind of like what you did.
Correct. Just what I did. I was able to discuss it. I read it. And then we had to.
That's the process. Okay.
Put it on the agenda today to vote.
Let me say this. What was put on the last time was under comments because it was then to be on this agenda for approval, so that it had that week's time or that meeting time, so that it could be properly noticed, blah, 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 which is, doesn't apply to everything, but it does apply to resolutions. So, once that came up last time, which was to then be discussed for approval to put on this agenda, it was determined that that be remanded to HPAB instead. So that's where that stood. So, the improper labeling, you can, might explain what you mean by that, but the intent for last time was that it be discussed and if approved, put on the agenda for this time.
But, but you weren't here to discuss it.
No, but, but it didn't include, it didn't include the item. It, it was, it was wrong. It had nothing to do with the item itself. The, the item was not to include a business district. That's why even, I wasn't even informed it was going to be HPAB, one that shouldn't be under their purview. This historic business district existed. It no longer exists. This, what this trail is, it celebrates formerly known as places that used to be alive. And what this does, it brings them back to life. I would still like to just do the presentation and maybe we can.
Okay. You're talking about two different things. Now you're talking about the trail head district.
It always was a trail. There, there never was any, any mention whatsoever of approving business districts. I'm saying that, that's why it was just off. It had nothing, last week's, the way it was labeled had nothing to do.
So why do we have two things on here we're talking about then?
You, you have to read them.
Two different resolutions.
They, they are two different trails.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Could you please take a step back and craft these so that they fit with what our perception of what happened was?
It's right here.
No, it isn't. Not one of us has what you have. We can't come into a meeting and just pretend like it's on our paper, Jahah.
You can't, you see with your eyes right there, eight B, I'm going to click it right now. It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
I click inside.
But that doesn't say.
No, yes it does. Yes it does. And then you go inside the agenda. The resolution is very clear what this is.
But we also made it very clear that we would only look at this if HPAB passed it. And they did not.
It was not under the purview. That's, it was.
But you weren't here to discuss that, Jahah. You left early. That was our discussion.
It was mislabeled. It was, the wrong item was put on the agenda. It was put on incorrectly. There never was anything about adding historic business district. The city is redundant. The city already knows.
Okay. As a point of order, let's, let's just hold up for just a minute. As a point of order, the way this has to work, if you have an agenda item such as this, it has to come to the council for a discussion first. It has to be a discussion, especially when there's a resolution that has to be adopted. You can't do it all at one time. The council has to have a discussion. And in theory and concept, they approve it. And then at the next council agenda, then you can ask for the resolution to be approved.
Then that's what we will do right now.
Okay. We, we did not have a discussion about either of these agenda items.
No, it was put, I, I informed staff, it was there. It was mislabeled.
So we.
But, but so what we can do.
It was not discussed.
No, but what we can do now, we can discuss it right now. And then if you wish, you can do something with it next time.
If we want to have a discussion item, that's fine. But I don't think it's appropriate for us to approve either of these resolutions at this point.
That's just fine. Well, we're going to discuss it because I need to share it with you. Because I said in the past, I was going to share this with you, updates on the project.
And I will say that the policy is that up until the one-on-ones on Monday morning, because of comments that may come in over the weekend from either council people or people that they've discussed things with, items can be changed up until that point. And that's why you see a different version than is actually on the website now because these were changed and updated on the website Monday morning.
So is what I'm reading on the website, which, because I'm looking at the website right now.
Yep, yep.
This is correct?
That's correct.
Then we have a discussion about it today. It's going to have to come back at another time for approval.
That's right.
Okay. So if you'd like to explain what each of these two agenda items are, then we can have those discussions right now.
That would be so.
Here.
I got to go. Where are the, um, Joe? The presentations? The first one was the, the Maroon, um, Wall Street. Oh, I'm running late. Oh, no, not that one. That's the, the second one. We can leave that up. I'll come after.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Starting.
Yes.
I can't.
Is it, is it open as a, as a PowerPoint problem?
Yeah.
Or did the other?
Should I say?
Sorry. Is it, is it, is it here? Here we go. I can do this one.
It's in a double aisle. That's good.
Sorry. All right. There we go. Can't we do, uh, you, is it? Is that on the table?
It's in the.
Yeah.
And you're just going to have to power it because it's not.
All right. Got it. Got it. All right. Got it. All right. All right, everybody. Here we go. All right. This, this is the, this came out of when we discussed before preserving the Glen Cleveland House, well, five oh two Gil Street, discussed being able to save that house and, and be, you're right here.
Yes, go. There you go.
All right. And out of that, it was finding a funding source to be able to do so. So in doing so, I, I met with leadership in the Department of State and discussed with them preserving the house as well as revitalizing our downtown as an expansion museum. And they then recommended a funding source, which was a grant from the Department of State. And it ended up being that the governor actually put additional money at the last minute into the budget. So we were actually able to get the, the funding to be able to preserve and move the house and basically create this process. And so this is called a Black Wall Street Trail. This, this relates to Black Wall Street, which was in Tulsa, Oklahoma, which was a very dynamic business district, which hundred years anniversary of it being destroyed last year. It was the first bombing in the United States of a domestic place. So this is a presentation I did before State Senator Kevin Matthews in the Tulsa Regional Chamber. After this, this meeting I had with them, they actually moved to, the state of Oklahoma is actually doing bipartisan legislation to actually make Pontagorda the trailhead for the trail and add fourteen cities in Oklahoma to the trail. So, just in short, this is just the mission of the Blanchard House Museum. My mother went somewhat over about this. We've, part of the Florida African-American Heritage Preservation Network and one of the charter members of the National African-American Museum at Smithsonian. The, what we try to do is combine the historical research, best education, the innovation, economic development, good governance principles. This is the institute we created. And basically it came out of my time on service. The city council was recognizing that if you're going to do real economic development, you actually have to empower local elected officials in being able to really give them the mandate with residents to be able to do so. So, what this trail does is that it actually creates a national platform for which the cities along the trail can actually then argue to their residents it's important to focus on these areas. So this is a tale, a trail of two cities. The Greenland Business District in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and the Cochran Street Business District in Pontagorda, Florida. These were both very dynamic areas that were very essential to the economies of those cities. And just a little brief thing on, on our history, because the reason why Pontagorda was chosen to be the trailhead for the city is because we have a very unique history as actually redefining ourselves despite national odds. So despite being in a place where there were severe Jim Crow laws, Pontagorda always acted in a different way. And so, we're actually, what you call the little town, the unity built. And it was actually a biracial settlement, founding and development of the town. We were seen as a model for, even despite national norms of how people treat each other, Pontagorda actually always acted at odds to that. So, during, so basically, we were looked at as a model community for our social governance. And Tulsa's looked at as a model for its, its economic development. And so this is the marriage between these two concepts. So just a brief history of our area, you know, we really came out of Hickory Bluff, which is on the Charlotte Harbor side. This was an area that was founded together with Lieutenant Nathan DeCosta and four African-American soldiers. They created that settlement, which later led to coming over to this side. This, you have basically Dan Smith, my great-grand uncle, led the survey team that actually brought the railroad from Bartow to here. And he was actually hired by future Governor Albert Gilchrist. And from this, they built this town, which in eighteen eighty-seven was, was incorporated. It was actually, despite the times, it was actually incorporated as a combination of African-American, European-American together. Pontagorda also is unique in that the first religious service held here, actually held by, by Dan Smith, actually was both Jewish and Christian. And so from the very beginning, we defined odds. One of the noted features of our history also is that we desegregated our schools voluntarily. There was no press, no police, no craziness. Just the parents decided that the time had changed. It was there. So just a few other things about our town. Also, one of the other features when you talk about economic development, we often talk about George Brown. It's very important mentioning him because in being that the residents of Pontagorda actually created an environment of mutual respect and, and supporting each other for mutual prosperity, people did not impend Mr. Brown and him developing a shipyard. In doing so, unlike other communities that had a hard time during the Great Depression, Pontagorda actually was able to offer full employment to its residents. So, African-American businesses located in the central business district until nineteen twenties, then more then started developing around where the churches are still till today. So that's Cochran Street Business District. This was a vital part of the Pontagorda economy until the nineteen sixties. It arguably was the heartbeat of the city. The historic district was lost because nineteen sixty-five, city council started to indulge the ideas of urban renewal. And after three-year battle with residents, the residents actually going all the way to HUD to, to protest having their neighborhood destroyed to put in public housing, which wasn't needed, the city decided to go with eminent domain and destroy all those houses. In doing so, it destroyed a critical mass of residents, which then the business district then fell. So as a child, I saw the very end of the Cochran Street Business District, which now we, has been renamed as Martin Luther King Boulevard. This is the Jean Cleveland House. So this, we, we go into a bold, exciting new chapter. So the expansion of Blanchard's Museum is actually through moving the Jean Cleveland House next to Blanchard House Museum. And this, this museum, this, like I mentioned, was supported by a four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-eight-hundred-dollar grant that was approved by Governor DeSantis back in June. And this home was the home of Miss Jean Wettigill Cleveland. She was a institution of Pontagorda. She was the longest-standing city clerk of the city until retirement in nineteen sixty, um, nineteen fifty-seven. This is also one of the few remaining types architecturally left in the city. The, what we call annex plus, the expansion, one, it houses the historic Cochran Street Business District two-point-oh, which is focused on the redevelopment of this area. Also, it's Florida's first cultural heritage center and youth museum. And then lastly, it's a place to encourage and cultivate each entrepreneurial interest of Pontagorda and Charlotte County youth. So basically just went into that. Also, we're housing a restaurant inside, so actually having a tangible terms of adding to the city coffers financially. This is just shows, this is one of the groups, we, we have a Celtic festival every spring, and that's just, that's, that's a, that's a group called Blue Sky. So, what we did was in working with Oklahoma legislators and with the expansion of this project, we're creating a national narrative built on unity. So the Black Wall Street Trail is a national public-private partnership across the industries to build an economic and cultural trail that will honor and connect the golden age of historic African-American business districts and inspire a new generation of Black Wall Streets around the country as a source of shared prosperity and pride for all Americans. We seek to educate and establish a national platform for civic engagement, governance, entrepreneurship, heritage and culture. Basically, any place which had a business district that was destroyed through urban renewal, or just as a need, see as an area where is, where commercial enterprise would go, can, can be on this trail. Also, our strategy with the Oklahoma legislators also was to get this trail designated as a national historic trail. So we started, so our, our goal for this is to actually have this done for the anniversary in twenty twenty-six for the National Park Service Foundation. And so already moving on that already. You may have seen the movie Green Book. Well, in this, I'll get to a cool part on this. The Green Book actually was a travel guide that showed people how to navigate areas of the South that were dangerous in the Jim Crow days. It basically highlighted all, you know, the hotels you can stay at, the gas stations, the restaurants that would serve you, things like that. So this actually was a, a feature of life. And so, and this actually came out of a Jewish guide that existed first, which was where you could safely travel as a Jewish person. And so it was inspired, Mr. Hugo Green, I'm sorry, he from Harlem actually took the idea and applied it to African-American community. So what we're doing here, we're taking the empowerment of local elected officials. We're taking the concept of highlighting these historic business districts. We're putting together with the National Park Service and its things, and then the idea of promoting small business. And this is what you call a Black Wall Street Trail. So this is developing an immersive economic and cultural trail honoring, connecting the golden age of historic African-American business districts to inspire, uplift, new generation of Black Wall Streets around the country. Similar trails exist, like the Freedom Trail, Purple Heart Trail, Sommeto Mount Montgomery National Historic Trail, U.S. Civil Rights Trail. One other feature of this is that along the trail, it's to recognize the local heroes. Basically, the people who were the entrepreneurs who created this time, as well as cataloging them. I actually was, had a meeting with Google yesterday. We were talking with a lot of technology companies because the technology now exists where you actually can talk to a group of elders, maybe ask them two thousand questions, and actually gain enough responses that you can actually have a pretty much an AI rendition, that you're actually able to speak to this person. So we want to be able to have in each community catalog that. Also, and this is where I'm going to the ed tech. So we're looking at also having both this be a physical trail as well as a virtual trail. Additionally, working with residential recruiters, there's a, there's a firm that actually specializes in small historic cities and bringing the appropriate businesses. And so for everyone on the trail, we are also planning to have economic analysis, a leakage study to determine exactly which businesses, basically what the spending of residents already is. So we'll know what are going to be the more likely to be successful in this endeavor. So, and so we're looking at around this Thanksgiving, starting a new national initiative called Shop Black Wall Street. So it would actually be on Black Friday, Small Business Saturday, Cyber Monday, and Giving Tuesday. We're discussing this now with Oklahoma Now. So, snapshot and next steps. Right now, we're in talks with, to be at NWC P National Conference in the spring. I'm going to be speaking on this at the Urban Land Institute Conference in Miami next month. The, the two Florida League of Cities conferences, looking at the National League of Cities Conference, working with the National Palaeological Council, National Park Service and U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and also looking at, right now, working to try to get Leadership Florida to have one of its annual conferences in our area. And so looking to speak there as well. And like, our governor gave this contribution. And so Oklahoma is actually right now working on putting in appropriation to support the trail also. And then I have the, what council, he was former mayor from Haynes City. He's now working all the, the cities along twenty-seven. So basically, what this resolution is, it, it's pretty much draft language, which if that's doing this, any other city that's going to join the trail, this is basically what it does. And it basically in short, it's, it's language which just to empower its local officials to be able to do this. And so, this, this is just basically saying that we seek to use our unique sociology as a model to honor and connect the golden age of historic African-American business districts and inspire, uplift, new generation of Black Wall Streets around the country. And so these are just some of our figures before. He, Henry Samuels was famous entrepreneur here in Pontagorda. He came and started a great number of businesses. The man on the right actually was at Sharpie Town. He was part of the old fishing industry. And then you have Charlotte High School in the middle. And thank you. So that's basically discussing that one. And then I'll show you the, where did we go? Come back here. Where are we going? So as I mentioned, what, what, the ways that communities join the trail is through resolutions, proclamations, or letters of support. And so this was basically a resolution that put forward, you know, being to discuss later, the yoke and review more carefully. But basically, it, it, it gives a history of Pontagorda and its unique history. Then it goes into the history of, of Tulsa. It goes to the history of the funding and support by the state of Florida and the Department of State. And then basically what, what it is, is to name Pontagorda as, as, as the trailhead for the National Black Wall Street Trail. And then this be transmitted to our state delegates and the governor because they, they supported this very tangibly. So that's basically it.
Okay. Two things. Can you make sure that all the council members get that presentation that you just read?
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Yes.
Speed dialed through?
Yes.
Because I've never seen that before.
Yes.
Secondly, before any resolutions are approved, we need to have that in our hands so we can have time to absorb it and.
Of course.
Digest it. And then we can bring it back for a future council meeting for a resolution adoption.
Sounds good.
Debbie.
Jahah, what are the repercussions of carving out a piece of Pontagorda and making it a national park?
There's no carving out. One, what we're doing, we're simply recognizing history. It's like any other, it's like any other situation where it's recognized as a national place. Like, I mean, like the Freeman House would be recognized as a national place. It does nothing. All, this is part of the concept. And I think this is where my sense of standing came, is that the Cochran Street Business District was a part of Pontagorda for most of its history. It only disappeared due to action taken in sixty-eight.
I understand all of that.
Microphone? Oh, no. What this does, it brings us tourism dollars. Basically, heritage tourism is one of the strongest, I mean, the reason why Oklahoma is so behind this is because heritage tourism is one of the strongest aspects of tourism. What this does is bring us heritage tourists, people who are interested in Pontagorda and its unique history.
But what does it do to the land?
No, no, there, there is no land. This, this is, this is the material. Cochran Street Business District was destroyed. What we're trying to do is just revitalize downtown. Well, one thing that happened in sixty-eight was that a fiction of something called the East Side came about, which never existed before. We always had one historic district. And what happened was at that point, the city made a decision to blight part of the city, thinking that it was disposable. The problem was in doing so, it destroyed a very strong part of the downtown. And then Pontagorda went into steep decline into the nineteen eighties. And it really took till Charlie to like push the restart button.
You know, you get more like a politician every day.
No, I'm answering the question.
You still have not answered my question.
No, no. What I'm saying is there is, there, there, there is no, this, this is, this trail, it just brings tourism. There, there is no, there's, there's none.
You said multiple times, it was going to be a national park. And I'm telling you.
No, no, not national park.
I used to go to a Girl Scout camp. And when they made it a national park, we couldn't build fires anymore.
There's no national park. This is a trail, a national trail, not a park. The Park Service funds everything that deals with culture. Like, for example, there's the Gulligichi Historical Corridor. Is this between Wilmington, North Carolina, down to St. Augustine? There is no restriction on traveling or doing anything between Wilmington, North Carolina, and St. Augustine, Florida. This is a trail. There, there is nothing physical involved. What this is, is, is support. What this does is it creates the area so Pontagorda actually can receive investment, financial investment philanthropic. It is nothing more. This is actually a concept. It's, it's not any place. This, what we're doing is just revitalizing our downtown.
So is this going to cost the city money?
No, nothing. It's zero.
That's a really important.
Okay. Then my second question is, I'm not sure that I want my wonderful little quiet city who was known for being one of the first places to integrate, to be the place that led Indians to a massacre.
What are you talking about?
I'm not sure that I see that as a positive.
What are you talking, no, what are you talking about?
Because this, this was the.
No, no.
Trail does. It goes right to Tulsa where there was a massacre.
No, Tulsa's Tulsa. We're in Florida. I don't understand what you're saying. No, the black, no.
There was a senator's name, and he was from Tulsa.
Right. And he led Tulsa. We're not in Tulsa. We're in Pontagorda, Florida. Pontagorda, Florida, we never did those things. That's why we're the trailhead. It's because we represent a city that's the opposite.
Where does the trail go?
It goes to Tulsa and throughout the nation.
Okay. Thanks.
First off, thank you for the presentation. I think that's what we were missing as council. On the agenda, we just saw this and didn't have a lot of back, backstory. So if I'm understanding correct, what this would do, if we were in support of this, is basically just to put a marker in that area, that this is what, you know, what the historic, historic value of it was. And if anybody's Googling and looking at the history of these Black Wall Street Trails, basically, we would be on there as well.
Yes, that's what it is.
So there's no physicality to it. There might be a marker, it sounds like. But if somebody said, I want to go visit all the Black Wall Street Trails, it would list Pontagorda as one of them. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what it is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. We'll then bring this back for a future meeting to adopt a resolution after we have a chance to review the material, if you can forward that to everybody.
Sounds good.
Or have the city clerk do it. Okay.
The presentation itself, if you forward that, we'll make sure that's on the agenda when it comes back up for a vote also, so everyone can see that.
Very good.
Okay.
Then the next item.
Thank you.
This is Patrick, because some of this stuff is the same. These are two different trails. So.
Oh, we're not done.
The Oklahoma was, this, this, the second one, right after that one. This is actually for the Sommeto Maroon Freedom Trail. Basically, in Oklahoma, the way things work is that because the native population is sizable, that the state always wants to make sure that its, its native nations are included. And so, the overwhelming support of this led to them. And so the overwhelming support of this led to them asking us that we also could do one that also respected the native community. So being that the Blanchard House is actually was recognized as a leader in terms of creating exhibits that relate to the history of the Seminoles and the Seminole Maroons. Then we were asked to do this as well. So this, this trail is different in that a lot of people don't know the history, because we saw this already. Again, it's similar. This is a shared national narrative building unity. The Seminole Freedom Trail is one that discusses the freedom that people took in terms of starting in Florida, going to Oklahoma, and going to Texas, as sorts of prideful Americans. The Seminole Nation was a nation that was formed out of actually two different peoples that were seeking freedom in Florida. So Florida literally was the beacon of hope. You had the Lower Creek who were escaping war, and you had Africans who were escaping slavery. And they came into Florida, and they actually made an alliance and became something now we now call the Seminoles. So the Africans came here because basically during the time of the revolution, if you sided with the British side, you were guaranteed freedom. And so after the British lost the War of 1812, all those forts in northeast Florida actually became African forts. And so it became a place where if you can just cross the St. Mary's River, there were people here to welcome you. And so actually, when we talk about the Underground Railroad, a lot of, it was actually illegal by law for the press to discuss what was happening in Florida. Because there was, it was such an active place where people to escape. So three times as many people escaped to Florida as they did to go up north. And so basically, these two nations together, these two peoples together created a nation called Seminoles. And they actually fought two wars to keep their people free. And the result of the Third War, which did not lose, it just was resolved, was that because Florida was going to become a slave state in 1845. The agreement was made that the black members of the Seminole Nation could actually be given free passes to Oklahoma. And then some of them also went on to Texas and New Mexico. So you actually find communities where you have actually Creek-speaking, Black Seminoles still living there. And so this is something which they also were wildly excited about because this is a history which is not told in this one that in Ponte Gorda we really highlighted. And so we actually did, and we did exhibits in combination, again, another national historic trail. This is a story which actually was written and discussed it, but I want to get to, I discussed about the Black Seminoles. I just want to get to the point with the Atitaki. So these were the two exhibits which were done. And again, this, I'll send all of this to you. This is what was done here in Ponte Gorda. And so we're recognized for the work we've done in discussing this history and this history of freedom. And the Atitaki Museum, which is on Big Cypress Reservation, actually contributed to bringing success to these models. And so what we're doing at the same level, we're taking the history of the Seminole Maroons. Again, creating a national trail to empower local elected officials because it gives them that platform for which they can then argue support. Support of the National Park Service and all the corporate philanthropic partners that come with that designation. And again, the economic development aspect is supporting small businesses. And so this is a one-of-a-kind immersive economic and cultural trail honoring and connecting the Seminole Maroon hair legacy in Florida, Oklahoma, Texas. And a national narrative enduring freedom. And it also employs the same aspects. And again, it involves our two cities of Ponte Gorda and Tulsa, Oklahoma. And this, you know, this is in the other packet. This was just that, and so that was discussion of that. So the resolution for that is just for us to also be a part of that trail.
Okay.
Thank you.
If we can get those presentations sent through the city clerk's office to all the council members, that would be great. Thank you. And we'll have a future discussion.
I mean, I would, how are we gonna, or who is gonna vet these to make sure that all the assertions? I mean, there's two pages of whereas is with each one of these. I mean, they need to be, somebody, I mean, I could, I would love to have the presentation. I will definitely look at it diligently, but I'm not qualified to look at it and verify that it's all accurate and correct and everything. So how does that happen?
Well, one, the language of the first one was actually taken from the one the U.S. Senate did recognizing.
Is your mic on?
It was actually taken from the U.S. Senate's commemoration of Greenwood. And so that was direct language taken from the congressional record.
The entire resolution?
Not the entire one. The other part was basically just talking about Ponte Gorda, and you can easily verify our history.
I think you're right, though. Resolution needs to be more succinct if we can kind of condense it down to.
I mean, it says what it was saying.
It's a pretty lengthy one on both of them. Okay, all right. We will bring that back at a future meeting then for adoption of resolutions. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the city attorney memo on city sign code.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have purposefully kept my comments regarding the Circuit Court judge's decision short. Because I was certain that some would perceive them as sour grapes. But given the fact that the integrity of the city council and city attorney was challenged this morning, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. First, to answer some questions, there were only two people who were brought before the city council, uh, city's code enforcement board. With respect to the violations of the city's sign code. No one was arrested by the city for violation of the city's sign code. There were arrests made by Charlotte County for reasons other than violations of our sign code. Also, to dispel the conspiracy theory that was presented this morning. The genesis of our sign code revisions was actually a U.S. Supreme Court decision, Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. In that decision, the U.S. Supreme Court found an ordinance that was substantially similar to the city's sign code. As being violative of the First Amendment because it was predominantly content-based restrictions on speech. I had advocated to the city council for a number of years following the Supreme Court's decision in that case. Of the need to amend the city's sign code to be consistent with the finding of the U.S. Supreme Court. Regarding the content neutrality of our ordinance. In the course of developing the city's sign code, there were certain instances of use of indecent speech. And questions whether or not the city could constitutionally regulate the indecent speech that was appearing on flags and other signs. Following the presidential election. After doing a substantial amount of legal research on the issue, I relied upon a U.S. Supreme Court decision. In Pacifica Foundation versus FCC, which was a case that, that where the Pacifica Foundation owned radio stations. One of which broadcast a political satire monologue by comedian George Carlin. Utilizing a number of the quote-unquote dirty words, as he used it, and as the Supreme Court recognized him. In a radio broadcast that could be heard by children under the age of 17. It was broadcast during the day. And the U.S. Supreme Court upheld the findings of the Federal Communications Commission. That the broadcast of indecent speech, as they were defined by the FCC, was constitutional. Given the fact that it was intended to protect children from exposure to such indecent language. I was also familiar and researched what was widely quoted and still is today. A U.S. Supreme Court decision in a California case called Cohen versus California. In that case, Cohen was wearing a jacket in a courthouse which had F the draft. And of course, it was the full word that was used, not the abbreviation. That case was actually a case where the local jurisdiction cited and convicted Cohen of disturbing the peace. Not, it was not a sign code case. It was not a case, anything but disturbance of the peace. And the U.S. Supreme Court decided in that case that the use of the F word without anything further was not disturbance of the peace. When this court, and based upon the precedents, not only of those two cases, but other cases that I researched very thoroughly. I presented an ordinance which defined indecent speech in the same fashion as it was defined by the FCC in the Pacific Foundation case. Which was upheld as constitutional by the U.S. Supreme Court. When this case went to court before the Circuit Court locally, the court, the judge considered the precedent established by the U.S. Supreme Court in Cohen versus California. And also considered the precedent of the U.S. Supreme Court in Pacifica Foundation versus FCC. And notwithstanding the fact that the Cohen case was not a sign case and was a disturbance of the peace case. The U.S., the local judge determined that our ordinance as related to indecent speech was. And even though recognizing that it was intended to protect children under the age of 17. The judge determined that our case was, our sign code was in violation of the precedent established in those, in the Cohen case and others. Rejecting the U.S. Supreme Court's decision as precedent in the Pacifica versus FCC case. And indicated that our ordinance with respect to the indecent speech language, our sign code, was unconstitutional. He nowhere determined that it was blatantly unconstitutional. He determined that it was constitutional, unconstitutional. And I had, and I had, I didn't struggle. I advised the city council that it was probably in the best interest of the city council not to take an appeal of the Circuit Court judge's decision. Because of the uncertainty of what our U.S. Supreme Court currently might say with respect to our case. Given the fact that reliance upon precedent and may not be enough to sustain the decision, the ordinance that we had put forward. So I have made the recommendation to the city council to amend the ordinance, to take out the language as it relates to indecent speech. To take out the language as it relates to fighting words, and to take out the language as it relates to obscene speech. So that there would be no further challenges of our ordinance as it relates to violations of free speech. But I do want to note, notwithstanding what others might say, it has been absolutely found by the U.S. Supreme Court. That the freedom of speech is not absolute. We are well familiar with exceptions to, and content-based exceptions to the First Amendment. Stating false statements under oath, perjury is an exception to the right of free speech. Slander and libel is an exception to free speech. There's a whole host of other well-understood classifications of speech that are considered to be exceptions to the First Amendment's right of free speech. And as I had researched the case law, and again, relying predominantly on the Pacifica Foundation versus FCC case. Which intended to address the same concerns we had when we adopted our ordinance. Recognized indecent speech as an exception to the right of free speech. So my recommendation before the city council today is to authorize me to draft an ordinance for your consideration. That would delete the fighting words, indecent speech, and obscene language provisions from our code. Thank you.
Any questions? Debbie?
David, would this still prohibit the reprehensible activity that went on outside in front of the school? Or are those signs also protected by free speech?
All right, so I was not and am not directly involved in that case. But it was my understanding that the, that Mr. Sheets was cited for things that were not directly related to the sign, language on the sign itself. It was his behavior that caused the sheriff's office to enforce their codes, not the city's sign code.
Okay. Jaha?
I had problems with this shortly after it was passed because, like, again, like David said, that the purpose of this was actually to ameliorate. To create a content neutral code based on our past code. The issues I saw was that I found that some of us, some of our members were actually using the code then as a way to actually openly basically say to restrict speech. I don't like seeing this sign, I don't like seeing this shirt. And I found that once we added the intent behind it, that it actually did, I did see it as becoming restricting of speech. But I didn't say anything because it was going to litigation, so I just waited until it was done. But I am happy we're here because I do feel that in the air, there is some intent to restrict speech through this. And so I think it's better we take that language out of the code.
Anyone else? Okay, so if we were to accept the proposed amendment, do, then we'd have to bring that back to council? And will it have to go back to Planning Commission or anyone else before it comes to us?
Well, it would not need to come back before the Planning Commission. But the procedure has always been that before we present to you an ordinance for adoption. That we presented to you the text or the concept for your discussion. And then determination as to whether you would authorize the preparation of the ordinance. So pursuant to that policy, that's what I put on the agenda today. And again, would request your authorization to prepare an ordinance that would come back before you, amending the code as I provided in my memo.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to have the city attorney draft official documentation for a proposed amendment to the sign code. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next discussion is land development regulations code testing.
Oh, no. Oh, yes.
Good morning. For the record, Joan Mabo, Urban Design Director. And we are here again to discuss the code testing portion of this project. As many of you know, we have been involved in this since we started and approved the Plan Ponte Gorda, City Master Plan in 2019. We made some changes to our comprehensive plan. We have several drafts waiting to be reviewed against the final land development regulation changes. And they will be added to the, updated then to the comprehensive plan elements. Which we will then submit at the end of this, of 2023 to the Department of Economic Opportunity. At last council meeting, you approved the transmittal of the letter to the Department of Economic Opportunity. It has been received by them, and we are scheduled, we are on their timeline now. We have one year from October 31st, 2022 to complete the comprehensive plan changes. So we have till October 31st, 2023. And for the code testing, we took a look at all of the city council comments that were provided to us in the public workshops. And we had quite a bit of public input from both the public workshops as well as emails and updates. In looking at them, it was updates for parking requirements, building heights. The old community benefits program has been redesigned. And it now ensures that developers have to provide value for certain things. And so as we get through the presentation, you'll see how those contributions are much better defined. And then we have recommended edits. Some of you provided a very nice, a substantial amount of corrections that need to be made. And those will be added to the final draft that will come before you. Back in, I think before you went on vacation, we had one meeting where we discussed the parking changes, which was a big topic among everybody. So in the old code, it was one space per dwelling unit. It is now two spaces per dwelling. It is now two spaces per dwelling unit. So we have taken that first draft and changed it. We maintained the office and retail and institutional medical government amount of one space per 1,000 square feet. There is no industrial in those areas, and the marina, then we kept at one space per boat slip, for two boat slips. In addition, at that same meeting, we discussed building height, and there seemed to be a consensus on the 80 feet. So we stuck with that when we talked with our consultants in the updated version of the code testing that will be brought to you next. So we increased the maximum height for the medical uses from 60 feet to 80 feet, and then we reduced the maximum height in that same area for non-medical uses from 60 feet back down to the original 35 feet. So those were the two changes for building height. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mitchell, and we will begin the contribution program changes. We do find that it is a streamlined program. We reduced the categories that were provided when we presented originally. We did not know how council would feel about that, so there were quite a bit of ambiguity in the presentation on community benefits. So we reduced the categories for the developer to contribute down from seven to four. We limited it to key areas only. There are program requirements, as I said, that will strengthen the detail in which the contribution is made, and the developer is required to do it. It's not a small item. It will be a substantial impact on his development if he chooses to utilize it. And then the approval process is in two stages. It will have city staff technical review and city council final action on all the final proposals. So with that, I will turn over and have Mitchell continue with the contribution changes.
And I want to make two comments before we go there. One, some of, well, this zone is still in the CRA, so when you look online at this intent of the CRA and the encouragement for redevelopment to increase the tax base with private contribution, when you look at some of the parking, like one per thousand square feet of retail, it is still in the CRA and part of what would be deemed the parking plan that enhances the parking required down there. Number two is that previously, if you were at 80 feet and you wanted to go higher, you could buy up through the community benefits that Joan referenced, and obviously that was not something that was well-received. So this turns that inside out, and while developer still has to provide something, if you're going to be at the 80-foot height, and council didn't specify this specifically, but there's two things. One, you are now required to provide the city more that benefits the development as far as spacing, green space, parking, et cetera, so that you can still do that 80 feet, recognizing that for higher density and height to the 80-foot limit, that the city has more pedestrian movements, has a greater number of residents in that area that we have to manage. So it is to our benefit to say, if you're going to do that, then the city's going to require you to give us this, so that we can more, that we can properly manage that and it doesn't become something that has height and mass without green space or that the city residents are then required to contribute more to. So there's those two things that are different in this presentation, and you'll see that as Mitchell presents the detail.
Thank you. For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. As Joan LeBeau stated, we have streamlined the developer contribution program. Just as a point of clarification, there is a Main Street overlay district that nests within the proposed downtown core regulating district. The developer contribution program is not applicable within that Main Street overlay. The purpose of the Main Street overlay is to protect existing historic structures and streetscapes. So in order to provide that enhanced level of protection, we want to ensure that developer, that development rights are not overly increased.
Mitchell?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any reason why you can't call that developer mitigation as opposed to contribution? I mean, mitigation is consistent with the idea that developers, to be consistent with the case law relating to regulatory takings, may be required to mitigate or offset the impacts associated with their project. The idea of contribution suggests that they're being, they're paying for a benefit that they wouldn't otherwise be entitled to.
Okay. Yes, certainly, we can, we can, we can take that advisement and modify the text so that it reflects that. I think for our purposes in the department and planning, it's really about the content of the program, the nomenclature surrounding it definitely needs to be compliant with legal precedent. So these categories are, again, streamlined from seven down to four, and they're workforce housing, public open space, public parking, and medical uses. So this system is designed as a points-based system where the contributions, we'll stick with that nomenclature for the presentation, please. The, these contributions that the developer makes earn them points, and those points can be converted into additional dwelling units per acre or additional building height in terms of feet. The example on the screen shows how public parking could be added to a site or public open space, which may lead to additional points, allowing additional residential density or building height. It's important to know that no matter how many points could be earned through this program, they could only be converted up to the maximum allowable heights and densities within the program for each of the regulating districts. So there's no way to exceed those maximum maximums. The first and one of the, the first category is workforce housing, and again, this is maximum of 20 points could be earned. They receive a point for every percentage. If they're doing moderate income housing, which would be approximately 80 to 120% of area median income, they would receive one point for every 1.5% of the total number of units on project that were proposed to be so restricted. Again, the maximum they could earn through that is 20 points. So additional requirements, these units could be either for sale or rental dwellings. The Punagorda Housing Authority has a role in helping us review those proposed agreements. The minimum timeframe for affordability is 40 years from the date of first occupancy of the structure, and these restrictive covenants must be recorded so that they carry with the land. Final approval for any, any of these proposed agreements is by city council, which I think is a key point. Public open space, this is, again, is a points calculation. There are three levels, from 5 to 15% of the total site area. So the maximum one could earn is that 10 points for 15% of the site area. The minimum development size of a lot is 20,000 square feet under this portion of the program. The open space created, that public open space, will be privately owned. It must be accessible to the public from a public street or right-of-way. Vehicular circulation areas do not qualify explicitly for this program. Landscape and hardscape plans are required, and the owner is responsible for all maintenance of the land in perpetuity. Again, this is really granting a public access easement to a piece of privately-owned land. And again, final approval is by city council. Next piece of the puzzle is public parking, and initially, we've set this at one point for every 10 public parking spaces provided, with a maximum contribution level of 20 points. So these parking spaces must be accessible to the public 24/7, year-round. They may be located on the development site or in some off-site area, whether that's providing additional on-street parking or in another publicly accessible lot. It does not count towards meeting any of the onsite parking requirements for those uses developed onsite. So this is parking in addition to what the code would require, and again, final approval is by city council. So just...
So let me stop there just for a second.
Yes, sir.
Each one of these has said final approval by city council, and what that means is that city council will be provided the project, the heights, and the checklist, so that you can ensure, check, 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 they got there by following what you approved. So it doesn't allow any changes to the ordinance once it's written and approved, but it does allow you to verify that all criteria was met by the developer before final approval was given.
So in terms of, of best practices and planning for providing public parking in a redevelopment area like this, we definitely need to reevaluate the existing parking utilization in the downtown area. The last evaluation, such evaluation was done in 2006, which is quite a long time ago. We need to identify those potential sites for parking solutions, whether they're public-private partnership areas or public-public or exclusively city. We need to explore partnerships with the counties or with the county or any other public landowners or parking owners in the area, and we need to explore parking management options, potentially time limits for on-street parking or fees in some locations, or the creation of a parking authority to ensure that, that we have a stable funding mechanism for this.
And since this will be part of the discussion, because this is not baked into the presentation itself, I just want to bring up a couple of points that when you're doing the required amount of parking, so if you had 250 units, you had to put 500 onsite spaces, we're going to have to decide as part of our parking plan, which is what this is geared to do, if they're not onsite spaces, the cost that they'll go into on off-site spaces itself, if you're doing surface parking and it's on or directly adjacent to the site, like street parking adjacent to the site, that's a good thing. If it's further away from that, do we want to guide it towards our parking structure? Because if you get into third-party agreements with deed restrictions and the property changes and things happen, it's really geared towards the city-maintained, owned and maintained parking structures, which then would be available to the public 24/7, as was stated. So that may not be at the same cost as onsite parking if you're building it in a structure and have to relocate that to the city's structure. It might be something less because this is for public parking, not related to this site specifically. It's to improve the parking in, say, the downtown core. If someone's going to eat at a different restaurant or going to a hardware store or whatever, this parking would be utilized 24/7 for anyone in that category. So it's an incentive that the developer could provide additional off-site parking in the city's parking structures for public use 24/7. And then the question, as far as we know, if you're allowed 80 feet, it's not just by right. Under this proposal, you have to mitigate some of the circumstances that come with the higher density and heights and provide that to the city. Do we want to require that some of that mitigation be off-site parking to help enhance the city's parking situation, other than the developed site as part of your calculation? So all of those are things that need to be discussed as we move this forward subsequent to the rest of the presentation.
Again, the, excuse me, the final category here is medical uses, and medical uses is a maximum contribution of 20 points, and it's for 80% of the gross area, floor area of the development minimum to be dedicated to medical uses. This is, this category is restricted to the medical overlay area, which is seen on the screen here, that's focused around the existing hospital. The medical use restriction must be in place for a minimum of 40 years, recorded by restrictive covenant, and again, final approval by city council. So this, again, is exclusive to medical uses within that district.
May I ask you a question? I'm sorry to interrupt. Where it says that this is a restrictive recorded covenant, that it has to be used for medical uses, are we cutting off our nose to spite our face here by limiting it so much? I mean, what happens if the city grows and the medical part moves a different direction, and you've got somebody who's sitting on property that says medical only?
So the, the medical overlay does not restrict those other uses. Those other uses are still in place, so they would have the underlying, if I can go back one slide, excuse me, forward. So the underlying regulating district is Village Center, which has a wide variety of uses.
Oh, so this is like a subset?
So this is a separate piece. It overlays on top of, so if they choose to use medical uses, then that would be in place. If the hospital relocates and the center of gravity for those medical uses moves to that location, then this becomes a redundant portion of the code, and at that time, we would just remove it at that point in the future.
So a recorded covenant isn't really binding?
Well, the covenant would be binding on the property, but the actual policy, prescription of having that medical overlay would be superfluous at such time that the hospital moved out of that area.
If they got heightened density because they made it 80%, and you put that in the deed, and now you're not going to use it for medical uses, does the building get shorter or what? That's the question, right?
Right.
Did you have something to say?
And, and provided that the covenant suggests, you know, that it's for the benefit of the city, the city would have the authority to release the covenant.
That's right.
Okay. Jaha?
Notice the map, you have Village Center here and you have medical, did the more medical overlay, did it switch from Mylis to Mary or is it still incorporated?
You need to talk into my job.
I was asking if, if it goes, all right, I see two, all right, I see the medical use here now. I know as of now, the medical overlay goes to Mylis. Is, does it move, is it moving over? I, I asked the question because I know property owners right now that are relying on the 65 feet, they're just waiting for our code down, basically for downtown to come back, and then they're going to build in it. So I don't want to restrict their property rights by reducing their building, because I do know people have plans, they're just not building now because it's not financially viable to do so.
So city staff can definitely review the, the proposed medical overlay to the existing to ensure that those maps align more closely. There, there may be an error in the mapping there.
What's the minimum maximum height in medical overlay?
The, the maximum currently, I believe, is 60 by right, and then the...
And under this?
And under this, it would go to 80. So it is an increase.
Better thing for non-medical uses, that's what I'm saying. I don't know what these people, they possibly do medical, maybe don't, but they purchase the land with the purpose of basically, because our downtown used to go that far, and so their use has not been determined yet, so I don't want to restrict their property rights by reducing the height on their property.
It would, it would go to 80. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it's not required to be medical to go to 80?
Oh.
It could have the other uses with it.
What was on there saying to 35? What was that?
So under the, the current draft, it is, it is required to be 80% minimum, 80, 80% minimum floor area dedicated to medical uses for, for the, the points that would allow the 80-foot in building height. So the way it's drafted right now, it would be restrictive to medical uses. Under the current provisions...
With the maximum of 20 points.
Of the code, it is also restricted to medical uses in order to get that 60-foot, unless they're proposing to do a planned development, which is another whole path current, in the current code.
May I ask, this is kind of, it's in the realm but non-related. Question, the builder said yesterday, our FEMA 50% rule, is it... Our FEMA 50% rule, is it one-year cumulative? I asked, because Charlotte County is looking at eliminating that, making it based on the permit so that people don't get taken out. And then the opposite extreme is Lee County's is five years, and they're trying to revisit that too. I was wondering, ours is five years?
Yes, the city's currently is a cumulative five-year. And then that's a higher level of compliance with, under the community rating system, so that is a points gaining provision, policy provision that the city has made, which enables greater discounts on flood insurance for every one within the community. So it's a very careful balance that one has to strike to ensure that private property rights and the general well-being of the public are balanced. So it's something, I've seen those reports about Fort Myers Beach and Lee County considering changes. It can have long-term impacts that are quite expensive to everybody within the community, depending on what happens, so.
And one thing, again, Joe LeBeau, Urban Design Director, Kathy Croto, the building official, and I are discussing about possibly bringing it back for discussion with the city council.
So without further ado, we do have, as one of the deliverables from the consultant on this project, what they call code testing. And this is really taking, drilling down into an individual property and saying, what impact would this have if these codes were put into place? What could be developed on these sites realistically, given all of the parameters of the code? So we wanted to test two locations. We have actually several, like eight or nine different locations, but here, we're just going to discuss two briefly. The first is Village Center, and we looked at a parcel that's just under two acres of And under that, Village Center provisions, the base density, residential density is 30 dwellings per acre, and the base building height is 35 feet. And the proposed development is 50 residential dwellings and 8,800 square feet of commercial space. The parking requirements would be 118 spaces. The parking illustrated or provided in the proposal, which you see in this diagram here, is 138. The residential density is also lower at 26. This is about what can realistically fit on the site. So the existing conditions today, this is a vacant lot, I apologize for the screen clarity with sunshine, a little difficult to see. And the illustration here is what could be built on that site, based on the site plan and those parameters. So 26 units per acre and three buildings, 8,800 square feet of commercial space facing Marion Avenue, some on-street parking provided, and predominantly onsite parking for the So again, this area is permissible for the developer contribution or developer mitigation program. And again, the developer contribution program would allow up to 35 units per acre and 65 feet in building height. The proposed development that they came up with, really parking is driving a lot of the site planning at this point with the parking requirements. So residential dwellings, they managed to get 64 dwellings onsite and 7,600 square feet of commercial space. Parking requirements, 144 spaces, and they ended up with 147. So the density is only 32 units per acre with a maximum of 35, but again, just the building, the building sizes, the number of parking spaces required is really driving those restrictions at that point. So again, in order to achieve those residential densities and building heights, the developer must require those points through the program, which would be 12 points total. They have managed to do that by providing some moderate income dwellings, a total of two, which would be 3% of the project onsite for two points, and 12,800 square feet of public open space and one pocket park and one plaza. This is 15% of the total site area for approximately 10 points. These areas are located immediately adjacent to the Pittman Street right-of-way, which was developed previously as a public park, as a linear parkway. So that's the logic behind the location. So again, the existing conditions, vacant lot, just as point of reference, again, under the base code allowances, this is the development that could be provided on this space. Under the developer contribution example, this would be the development. Again, the increased building height, but a greater setback from the public right-of-way with that building with the public open space plaza area.
And in many cases, you can look at that inversely, that that's what is allowed if you provide the mitigation, and if you decide you don't want to provide the cost for the mitigation, then you're going to build something much less intense so that the city can properly manage that with what is required.
Exactly, precisely. So the next example for code testing that we want to look at is the downtown core, and we're looking at a parcel that we all know and love, colloquially known as City Marketplace. It is approximately 5.61 acres on two blocks in the core of the downtown area. The development rights for this area, we have residential density at 30 units per acre. Building heights are restricted to 35 feet within the main street overlay area, which covers a small portion of this site, and 50 feet within the downtown core. The proposed development, as illustrated there, is 134 dwellings, which would require 268 parking spaces, and 80,000 square feet of commercial, which would require 80 spaces, for a total of 348 parking spaces, which they have provided all of those. So just to give you a sense, the main street overlay would cover this portion of the site. It's really just the front, like 60 feet of the development site. So this is the existing condition, minus the tents.
Excuse me, Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
If you look at, go back to the, I think it's page 23.
Oh.
Yeah, look at page 23. Using your urban design prognostication hat, how likely would we be to get a developer willing to develop to that scale of parking to buildings? Are we pretty much eliminating most of the builders in our area?
So in terms of the development potential at this base level, that's essentially what is in place now. The proposed code is based on the allowances in the current code at that base level, at the non-mitigated level. It is really the developer mitigation portion, that proposal, that is the delta, as it were, the change that allows us to go from maybe not potentially feasible to feasible. Within the base allowances, the big change from the current code is really residential density. So having, going from 15 units an acre, which is a very suburban level of residential, to 30, which is a much more small-town urban kind of residential density. We discussed previously, in a previous presentation, the schoolhouse apartments that are on Goldstein Street. That one development, which is historic and predates all zoning within the city, is actually 32 units per acre. So it's a very comfortable known thing.
It's just so many of these looked like we were just putting in parking lots.
Yes.
Well, the question is, can you build it with two per residential unit? If you have 30 and you have 60 parking spaces required, can they still build it on the site?
Yes.
So that hasn't really answered my question in that, you know, have we or are we going to do any testing to see if this is commercially viable? I mean, not just the base, but the developer contributions. I mean, if it's not commercially viable, then we're going to be looking at it for another 20 years.
So the discussions that we've had with private sector developers, and I personally have had conversations with developers that I've met in other contexts other than doing city business, that have discussed these types of projects, these types of infill residential commercial projects, and typically, they're looking at three-to-five-story buildings, so 50 to 80 feet in building height. They're looking at residential densities between 35 and 50 units per acre. And the big, the big piece of the puzzle that they say is missing from when I described this in quick terms to them in the elevator pitch, they say parking's an issue. Typically, what they're seeing in these types of markets is 1.5 to 1.7 parking spaces per unit is the actual demand for projects here in southwest Florida or lower. And again, it depends on unit mix and unit, like the unit sizes, how many bedrooms they expect to have, the price point, how many of these units do they expect to go to? I think I've just lost the computer, it ran out of power.
Yep, it's at 38%.
It is, it is a, so the residential density, commercial intensity, those are realistic. The parking for commercial, they say, is realistic in terms of what they could possibly build, but the residential parking requirements are high. They do say that the fact that we don't have fixed route transit in this context, where in other contexts, like Fort Myers, Cape Coral, they do, so that makes a little bit of a difference. But that's, their sticking point is the parking.
But, so the points, then, to get the extra parking, that's the part that I'm asking, is that commercially viable? Is somebody actually going to pony up to do one point for 10 spots, up to 20 points, which would be 200 spots? I mean, is that, has anybody tested that with a developer to say, would you pay that kind of money to get a little bit of extra height? Does that make sense?
So we phrase those questions-
To help answer that, one, do we have any current approved projects that were used as examples there that had extra parking and extra green space? Do they comply with this proposal? And two, then, how does that tie into the parking plan where they could buy extra spots? Which, if you're talking about 250 units that required 500 spots, and they want to put 25 spots and it's a mandatory thing, and they want to put 5% of that offsite, if they were $10,000 apiece, you're talking about a $100 million project that would cost $250,000. So that's not a terrible thing, but it's how, under the discussion for parking, you structure what they're allowed to do and where that makes it more viable. I'm not sure we have that part nailed down yet until we have that discussion. But the other one, as far as the project that has come in, have any complied with this level of requirement? That would be the one question.
There, just for the record, there is a project underway in Cape Coral and another one in Fort Myers that falls under these kind of general parameters. They've been advertising it on the news in the last few weeks, so maybe we could take a look at some of those projects and see how we compare. But I see the renderings on the news every night, and what they're showing is basically what we're talking about here. I also think that some of the additional points, you know, I was never a fan of community benefits, and the term just makes me crazy, but developer mitigation points, if we elect to include those, I think some of those should be required to be parking, public parking. I think not just make it an optional part of the add-ons. If we're going to give them 50 feet by right, and then they have the option to add up to 30 points of additional benefits, then I think some of that needs to be mandatory parking for public parking. That will put into play our long-term public parking issues that we've been having. So no matter what way we do it, however we structure it, whether it's in public parking in our garage or another parking garage structure, or, you know, spaces that can be purchased from someone else, I think that that may be something that would at least get us on the right track to, but make it mandatory as part of the point accumulation.
And that's part of that parking discussion, but back to that question. So the one that was approved recently that everyone thought was great was the one behind Justice Center. So how many dwelling units did they have per acre? How many parking spaces did they have per residential unit? And how much green space did they have that was open to the public? That's the question.
Yes. So in terms of their parking requirement, their parking provided, they were at two spaces per residential unit. The public open space that they provided was approximately 5% of the site area, and they provided additional on-street public parking, which is completely non-restricted. I think it was either 14 or 16 additional spaces. So their residential density went from 15 to, I believe, 20 or 21.
22 and a half, it was under the 50% more.
But we have to also note that that's not reflective of our market prices for land, and that's the difference, is they had a lot more room to play with and that other people won't have down in the core.
But that one did comply with these requirements. Complied with parking required, with density, and required 5% open space. That one met these requirements under the new code, given what you just said. So that was commercially viable. And then they provided additional space around the outside for public parking also.
Everyone died over here.
Sorry, we're having technical difficulty.
So while we're waiting, I guess maybe I'll just make a comment that I was going to make later anyway, that I'm a little bit concerned with this council providing binding direction to the staff on this stuff. The reason being that this is the last meeting of this council, and I think we need to provide the new council members, they're going to be seated in two weeks, the opportunity for input on this. So, for a couple of reasons. We don't, we have a timeframe, October 31st of 2003. We can't afford to give the staff direction to go down a road and then have new council members disagree with that direction and then vote it down, and then we have to start all over again. So I think it's absolutely critical that we defer this, any direction. We could certainly have the presentation and have discussion, and they're all here in the room, but I think that we have to wait to give the staff any direction on any, anything coming out of the, out of the presentation today, so that they have an opportunity for input, so that we don't spin the staff around and have them redo it and then redo it, you know, a few weeks later. And I also think we've talked a lot about the parking, and I think any direction that we would give staff right now in terms of parking is a little bit premature, because that's a critical part of this, and we haven't had an opportunity to even meet with the county commissioners yet to find out what we can actually do. What are we going to be able to do? What are we going to pay for? And that way, we can, again, give staff more succinct and actionable direction that's going to move us towards October 31st. that's gonna move us towards October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, that much quicker. So I would make a motion that we table providing any direction to the staff at the conclusion of this presentation until we have an opportunity at a future council meeting so that the new council members had an opportunity for input.
I second that.
Well, having discussion on this, I disagree with you. We've been discussing this for ad nauseam for at least six years that I've been on city council and we are at a point where we have to start moving things forward and not just keep deferring it. And I think that the city staff has spent a lot of time working with Dover Coal to get to where we are right now. And I think it's important that we move some of this forward so that they can continue finishing the LDRs that have to be adopted so that we can move everything forward and move on. We have already had discussions about what we want for building height. The city staff has listened to us. We have been relaying all the way through this, all the comments that have been made by a lot of the residents who were very upset about the proposal from the Geis companies, a lot of the discussion that we had about that project, whether it be between us and our cabinet groups, whether it be with residence groups that we met with, whether it be at meetings or whatever the venue was. The comments that were received loud and clear from the community led us to where we are right here. And I think it's important that we do adopt some of this stuff today so that we can continue moving forward and we can continue to do code testing. But I think they've come up with a reasonable compromise to what was originally proposed, which would have been a hundred-foot-tall buildings that we don't want. We clearly know we don't want that in this community. At least, I cannot support a hundred-foot buildings in this community. I don't think it's appropriate, especially in the city center downtown. I think that, you know, if you look at what they're proposing, they're basically saying you can have fifty-foot buildings and then you can add points up to a maximum, all-in, no exceptions, eighty feet tall. That's what we discussed and we had a consensus of at least three of us several months ago about that. And I think that's part of the discussion today, that we wanna establish a hard definitive height requirement that we're not gonna exceed. They've done that. They've already incorporated all these defined developer mitigation benefit points. So I think we've got things down to where they've accommodated all the things we asked them to accommodate. And I think we have to keep moving things forward and not just keep deferring it. And I mean, no disrespect to incoming council members, that's not my point at all. I think we have been, as a council, this council, has been discussing this for a long time. Jahah and I have been on this council for six years. We've gotten to a point where we have to keep moving things forward. That's all I can say about it. I would be opposed to deferring anything at this point. Debbie?
I would just like to move the elephant in the room, which is that there are people who don't want me to vote because they know what I stood for when I was elected and what I stand for now and you're hoping that there'll be somebody else sitting here that will agree with you. And what I want to say is that I attended every charrette, I attended every workshop, I attended every meeting, and if my vote isn't good enough to count, you should've kicked me off two years ago.
Since you're directing that to me, I'll respond to that. That's not true. What I'm saying is that we need to give...
Is your mic on? Because I can't hear you.
It's on. I'm not expecting, because I don't know who's gonna be sitting in that seat in a couple of weeks. I'm not looking at a vote. What I'm saying is that there are going to be different people sitting here that have different opinions, maybe, and those opinions need to be heard. And the fact of the matter is, no matter what we vote on today, it's not binding because they or me could bring it back at a future council meeting to rehash this whole thing over again. So what I'm saying is, we shouldn't be doing that today. It's not binding anyway. We're gonna go through the whole thing only to have to go through the whole thing over again. So the presentation is fine, I have no problem with the presentation and I'm not advocating for a hundred-foot buildings either. I had said in the previous meeting that I would be amenable to the eighty-foot buildings as long as we resolve this parking thing, but the parking thing's not resolved either and it's a long way from being resolved until we meet with the county. So it isn't about who's voting, it's about trying to be efficient and move this thing forward quickly. It's not gonna matter. There's gonna, whatever we do today, there's gonna be discussion in a couple of weeks. And we just, why do it twice? I mean, I wouldn't have even done this presentation today at all, but they're all here so they've seen it, so we probably don't have to go through the presentation again, but we would have to have the discussion. I mean, it's only right that they have an opportunity to have input.
David?
Yeah, as I hear the discussion, I don't think any of the comments are conflicting. The, what the agenda item is requesting is to give direction for the preparation of an ordinance, which then would be subject to public hearings before the new council, where the new council can decide whether the ordinance as it was presented is adequate or to make recommendations based on the testimony at the public hearing to make changes.
Right. And if they voted it down because their input wasn't input, then we start all over again. My point is, we ought to include that input before the ordinance is drafted, before all this thing is changed, because all that's gonna do is slow the process down.
Jahah?
I have very good reason why this needs to be delayed. The fact that we're discussing the medical overlay district, I serve as the trustee on Shorepoint and I can tell you for a fact that Shorepoint needs a hundred feet. And so in the fact that there have been changes in leadership, the city actually, especially talking about medical things, part of our conversation is actually be with those most impacted, which is Shorepoint Hospital. So I just think, just in that regard right there, this is premature to give direction in that. Because I think especially, we've gotta do what's necessary to support our healthcare. I mean, the fact that we're an older community, that's one of the most essential pieces and I don't think we should rush through that piece whatsoever.
Melissa?
Well, I know we have a motion on the table, but just as discussion, speaking of medical overlay, actually, it's one thing I was gonna bring up, inappropriate, but, you know, one thing I did wanna discuss today is giving guidance. I personally think that medical overlay needs to be at a hundred feet. And I had some other questions too. So, you know, I agree that we're all here, we're all sitting, you're always gonna have changeover and you're always gonna maybe have to do things over, but this is where we're at right now and I think we need to move forward with giving guidance. We're not definitively defining anything. So I would agree that we need to move forward with this presentation and also move forward with opinions from all present council and go from there.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Would you please restate your motion? Because it's been a while.
I move that we table the providing the staff any direction today until a future meeting where the new council members have an opportunity to provide their input officially in public.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, as stated by Councilmember Koharski. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
So motion fails, two to three. Okay.
So we have this back up. And where we were was, we were talking about, just as an example, there was an illustration here of what was being built on Marion behind the Justice Center. And in that case, the density of twenty-two or so and the parking of two per residential unit and the... We had density, we had the height and the open space, which was five percent of the site plan that was accessible to the public, does match and meet. And actually, they came in as a PD so they could get that sixty-five feet, actually, so they could make that density work with the other requirements. That does meet what we're discussing currently. But that is that piece of property and that size and that developer. So moving that to another parcel, you know, property values, et cetera, that's where really the parking, if someone says, you know, these twenty-five spaces I have to put here, instead of those spaces, I could use that for, or whatever the number is, ten-thousand square-foot of retail, which would be a constant return and more retail downtown and increase that amount, maybe those spaces would then be more lucrative, put into a parking structure as part of the parking plan we're talking about. They could then buy those spaces in that parking structure from the city. And if there's additional off-site spaces or onsite that they want to purchase as part of the points system, they could either build those onsite or if they're built off-site, they could be part of our parking plan also in a parking structure and maybe at some cost differential because they are available for public parking twenty-four-seven for all the businesses and purposes downtown, not just for that development. So those will need to be discussed and all that is predicated on some type of parking structure and where we want to put that and how that's going to be used so that we know how many spaces we can then justify for development. But major development that wants to use their onsite space, even though the onsite surface parking is much cheaper than the structure, that also then prevents some of the retail that may occur, some of the return on investment long-term, that might be better to pay for some off-site parking and allow them to develop that onsite or require some additional off-site parking also. So that's all part of the discussion.
Oh, no, it went away again?
Oh, no.
Not because of the battery, though. That's good.
So, back to the City Marketplace site.
Is that microphone on? Because we can't hear you.
Sorry, I apologize.
Thought I was going deaf again.
Again, Mitchell Austin Urban Design. So back to the City Marketplace site. Part of this site is covered by the proposed Main Street Overlay Historic District. So the site as it looks today and an example of a development that could be constructed under the proposed code with those unmitigated development allowances would remind everyone that the front twenty feet of that piece of land is actually a parcel of land that the city owns. They're highlighted in yellow. And then the proposed Main Street Overlay would cover that box, the little orange box shown on the diagram there. So the buildings beyond that Main Street Overlay are popping up to fifty feet. The ones on the street are thirty-five. So again, in the developer mitigation example, the maximum would be forty units per acre and eighty feet in building height. If they are located within the, that area of the site that's located within the Main Street Overlay does not qualify for any of those additional developer mitigation, particularly with regards to building height. So the proposed development here is two-hundred-and-ten dwelling units and a hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand square feet of commercial space, which is quite substantial, with total parking of five-hundred-and-fifty-two required and they're providing for six-hundred-and-forty-two spaces on this site. The way that they get there, in terms of meeting the proposed developer mitigation requirements, is they're providing ninety spaces of public parking in their garage. So these are ninety additional spaces beyond their code parking requirement for nine points. And then they're providing thirty-five thousand square feet of public open space in two locations, a plaza mainly fronting on the corner of Marion and Taylor and a small pocket park at the northern end of the site on Harborside Avenue, granting them a total of nineteen points, enabling them to get the additional building height and residential density. So again, existing conditions, the unmitigated development allowances and then the mitigated development allowances. Again, that twenty-foot strip is owned by the city. This portion of the site is that Main Street Overlay area with the balance of the site having the additional building height, the front plaza there. We're showing all of these examples without trees and landscaping so that you can see the actual development. In the real world, that plaza would be tree-filled as part of the requirements for that public open space.
Now, again, on this one, part of the discussion is, you can see the thirty-five-foot-long Marion and one of the initial discussions was that you didn't want taller buildings up against shorter buildings. So across the street, that thirty-five foot's consistent, but then directly behind it, you've got seventy foot. So is that thirty-five feet along Marion, is that too short? Should there be a little more allowance there for office space or roofline or more architectural features on the top? That's one of the discussion points. And then, of course, when you look at this, if you have an allowance of eighty feet, this thirty-nine dwelling units per acre and seventy feet would look like this. If the developer, you can see in this one that there's more open space, there's more space between buildings, it's less dense. So if a developer wants to do this, that's what they're going to be required to provide. If the developer does not provide the city the mitigation tools to handle that level of density, pedestrian traffic and residents downtown, then they would only be able to build to the base code, which was, can you put that back up? This is the only thing that would generally be allowed, although that doesn't keep the corner open like the other one, if there's no mitigation from the developer for the higher density and heights.
The other thing we did not discuss was, when we had our one-on-ones, we talked about the fifty feet being from grade, not from BFE. So we're talking about potentially another six to eight feet if it were above BFE. So I think we have to clarify that. But if we're talking about eighty feet all-in, somebody's gonna have to make that work. One way or the other, they have to back into that number if there's a differentiation between what the actual height is versus base flood elevation accommodation. But we're saying eighty feet all-in, that means all the roof accoutrements and the base flood elevation allowance.
So, no, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
I just wanted to clarify this picture and correct me if I'm wrong, because I frequently am, but the seventy feet that you see here, if that building is measured as seventy feet above BFE, if, for example, in this picture, BFE was six to eight feet, just say, that would generally give you what eighty feet from grade would look like. Because right now, you're looking at seventy feet, but that's above BFE and if that's six or seven feet, you're at seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-six. So that's generally what it would look like if you're talking about eighty feet from grade, but there's only seventy feet of actual building there. So you have to, you're right, you have to define how you want that calculated. If that was an eighty-foot building, it would then be eighty-seven, eighty-six, eighty-seven feet total.
Jahah?
What I was gonna share was that one thing, as Mitchell mentioned, it's been denuded and in reality, when you build proper downtown, you're gonna have your awnings, you're gonna have your landscaping, your trees and everything. So what residents see is gonna be at, like in your eye level. And so I think to some degree, we get overly concerned about height because it's really something you won't see. I mean, I've lived in many cities and I can tell you have no idea how high any buildings are if they're designed properly. And I think in our case, meaning that we are an historic city, that part of the accoutrements are gonna be things like the awnings and outdoor cafes and trees and like that. So I think that this, for our purposes of making regulations is cool, but I do think that with presenting to residents, we do need to actually show sometimes some street-level looks of how it's gonna look in reality as opposed to kinda like from helicopter view.
Okay, Mitchell, you have anything else?
No, that is all that...
Sorry, no, that is all that city staff has. I would like to reiterate the point, though, that the reason that the current code allows building heights to be measured from base flood elevation is that we do not wanna penalize any private property owner, their development rights for building a more resilient structure. So the way that the current code is written, we measure building heights from base flood elevation. The current staff interpretation of that is that it's not only what's on the FEMA rate map, but FEMA rate map plus what's required by the Florida Building Code, which is one foot of freeboard. So base flood elevation, as we're currently implementing it, is that base flood elevation on the flood insurance rate map plus one foot of freeboard under the Florida Building Code. And again, we want the city to be as resilient as possible to possible coastal flooding events.
Melissa? Couple of questions with the presentation. The two residential spaces and... The two residential spaces in it, is anything that's over 20,000 square foot, correct?
So the 20,000-square-foot restriction for the developer mitigation is only for the open space. So if they wanted to use the open space contribution level or mitigation measure, they would have to have a larger lot. The parking requirement for residential, the two spaces per dwelling, that is universal based on council direction. The current code for the downtown core is one space per dwelling. And again, based on conversations with developers in other markets, they're at as low as 1.3, upwards of like 1.7 spaces per residential dwelling is sort of their market.
I might have said that wrong. So on slide four, basically, it says, you know, two per dwelling, lots greater than 20,000 square feet.
Oh, yes.
I said that wrong, I apologize. So my question is, what happens with lots that are under 20,000 square feet with parking?
Trying to get that slide up so everybody can see. Yes, this, within the, so within the draft code, there are three different sets of parking requirements. There's one for those regulating districts that are not within the downtown core. Again, residential dwellings stay the same. We increase the requirements for office, retail, medical, institutional, et cetera, because we're less likely to have public parking in those areas. Within the downtown core, we have lots that are greater than 20,000 square feet. Those large lots are areas where we definitely anticipate that they will be able to provide onsite parking. As you get into the small lots, we have lots in the downtown core that are as small as like 3,400 square feet. If you look at it, you can't really put cars on a 3,400-square-foot lot, it just won't fit.
So there's no required parking for something?
So there's a parking exemption below, currently, it's written as below 20,000 square feet. So if you have a 19,999 square-foot lot, you would be exempt from those parking requirements. You would have to demonstrate that there is available public parking either on-street or in a garage or somewhere on a adjacent site so that you could legitimately meet the parking demand in that area. We don't want to compound situations. But yes, we haven't, as a city, invested substantial sums over the last 15 years in public parking. So there is quite, within that downtown core area, which is very small, there is a substantial amount of public parking already.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is the reason the current code is one per dwelling is because at public, with public money, we built Harrell Court specifically so that, to encourage development in the downtown core, to reduce the parking burden. So that is why Harrell Court exists. That is why we have one space per. Okay. I just want to be clear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And if it's under 20,000 square feet, if you say Jesus is part of that whole discussion on parking, you could also say there needs to be some level of contribution towards the parking plan to mitigate the requirement of parking at these spots, because obviously there's, you know, if you look at City Marketplace in the last couple of weekends, there's a substantial number of cars parked on that. And as soon as that stops, which will probably not be long, regardless of development, those are going to be on the street again. So, you know, with more development comes more parking requirements, and you certainly have the ability to, in the code, require some of the parking to be provided as a mitigation amount to the city.
Okay. So to summarize some of this, I think, moving things forward so we can at least keep the ball rolling on all of this, I think we have to agree on some of the proposed changes that are incorporated into this, one being the two spaces per dwelling. Does everyone agree on that?
I'd rather wait on parking study for that.
Mark.
I'm going to reserve my comments for the next meeting when we discuss this, and I'll support whatever you guys want to do today.
Okay. Okay, and we're talking, we're talking about the elevation overall with, I keep wanting to say the bad word, with mitigation points to be 50 feet by right plus a possible additional 30 feet up to a maximum of 80 feet all-in, no exceptions. Does everyone agree to that, based on what's presented today?
Not for medical.
And what would you like the medical to be?
100.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
I'm okay with medical being 100.
Does anybody else have a problem? Medical being 100 allowance. And I'm fine with that. I have no prob, I think that's where we need the height, and I don't have a problem with that at all.
And what do you mean all-in?
All-in being, including accommodation for base flood elevation and all rooftop elements. All-in, no exceptions. That's as high as you can go, including everything that the building has attached to it.
So then, you're really not talking 50-plus, you're talking, so essentially, then, let's say that if it's a nine-foot elevation, 10 with that one base board, so 80 would become 90 is what you're talking, if you don't do, if you don't do all-in?
Yes. But that's why we're saying all-in and no exceptions. And they can't come back for a special exception, because that was what our discussion was several months ago. And then the medical district can go to 100 all-in. Do we have consensus on that? We have four out of five. Okay.
No, I agree. I said I will agree with anything that you guys want today. I'm going to reserve my comments for the next time that we discuss it. I'm not voting against anything.
Okay. Well, so I'm asking for consensus.
More consensus.
So we have consensus. Okay. What else do we need to discuss? Does anybody have any feelings one way or the other about requiring public parking as part of the additional points? Yes, I feel very strongly that that should be something we should consider.
Well, it is included in that, right? If they want the extra?
Well, it's an optional, it's an optional point contributing thing, but could, would you be, would you agree to making that a mandatory part of any additional height? Accumulation of points must be used for some of the...
And that's it, just parking, and that's it?
Not singularly, but if they have, if they ask for additional points, that some of those points must be used for additional public parking.
Oh, I see what you mean. So in other words, they just can't pick from the four, they have to do something, but parking has to be included?
Correct. That will, that will get some of the parking plan moving forward overall. Debbie?
The only thing with that is you're limiting...
Are you on your mark?
The only thing with that is you're limiting future development, because what if the county and the city end up building a parking garage and you don't need that, but you really need park space? Now you've got it in our long-term plans, our comp plan, everything, that they have to provide parking.
Okay. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
I tend to agree with that. I like the way that this has been used right now.
Okay. That's fine. I mean, I really think that a lot of this stuff is a reasonable compromise. We've talked about this back and forth, and originally, we were going up to a potential of 100 feet downtown, and we all said, well, most of us said, we didn't want to see that. I, you know, I'm fairly sure that a lot of this is a lot more palatable to the residents that we represent, who have talked to us a lot about this whole change to the code and form-based codes being adopted and everything else. So I'm just trying to kind of, you know, give a synopsis so that staff has direction to move forward and come up with the final plans for all of this, and it'll be talked about further, I'm sure.
May I ask just one question that, before I forget? Workforce housing, is that limited? It just has to be in the city, correct? It doesn't have to be in the downtown core, it's just in the city of Punta Gorda if a developer would choose that?
So the way that it's currently written is that workforce housing would have to be incorporated within their development.
Part of the project.
So there's no, like, buyout provision where they could provide funds for that housing to be built somewhere else, it would be on their site.
My only concern with that is, you know, the price of the property that they're going to buy, would that even be an option to do that?
But it is an option, and there's, that's one of four options.
Well, that's true. Yeah, that's true.
So if they want to pursue additional points for additional height, it has to be among those. I like the fact that they've clearly defined what those points can be for.
No, I like that, too. I just don't think workforce is going to...
We didn't have that before, and I think that was part of the problem that everybody was having in the community. Debbie?
I would just like to add that workforce housing doesn't mean Section 8.
Oh, no, I know.
It doesn't mean fully subsidized. Sometimes we pay up to $1,000 more than what the people are required to pay so that they can live in workforce housing. So it's, you know, it's not $50 a week, month, whatever. So, I mean, I don't think price of property may not be the deciding factor, because there are sources available.
That was my concern, so, thank you.
Okay. All right. Have we missed anything?
Green space.
Oh, green space? What do you want to say about green space?
Just, they can, of course, provide additional green space, which gives us more breathing room between buildings, et cetera, more pedestrian access, more public access to those spaces. And the way that's proposed, that would allow them to get to the by-right height with mitigation to provide additional public space, which seems to be a good thing.
Okay. Everybody agree on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we missing anything? I think that kind of encompasses all the different things we've talked about. Does that give you guys enough direction to move things forward?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Okay.
So, my father had surgery yesterday and had a crisis overnight, and I found out a couple hours ago, and I need to go. So I cannot stick around for the rest of this. Thank you.
Very sorry. I hope he comes up. Okay.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Do we want, do you want to take a break for five minutes, or do you want to keep going?
So this direction is by consensus.
Yes.
Yeah, five minutes might be nice.
Sorry?
Five minutes might be nice.
Okay. Let's take a five-minute break. And we'll be back at 12:53.
Where's my lunch? You all right?
That's awesome.
I have a slice.
That's a good...
Ms. Dr. Riker. Good afternoon, Melissa Riker, Assistant City Manager. You had asked me to come back to council with the outcomes report from our FY 2022 strategic plan. I have provided you that within your packet. I'll just touch on a couple of highlights. There were 38 items that were completed, 15 had substantial progress, and six were moved to fiscal year 2023. In most cases, what would happen is one part of a project would be delayed, so that would push other items that were associated with that project backwards. You know that our strategic plan was developed based on our mission, vision, and values, and that's one of the reasons why it is so easy to have success within the strategic plan. Our biggest challenges this year were supply chain issues and the costs of supplies increasing, as well as some staffing positions that went unfilled for portions of the year. Our biggest success drivers were relationships that we have, not only with the community, but with our vendors and also within our organization interdepartmentally. We've had all hands on deck for a number of situations where people are working in departments that isn't their home department just to get things done. And then certainly, our success is because of the support of City Council and the direction of City Manager Greg Murray. Part of my presentation is an overview of what was accomplished the previous fiscal year. And we've talked, as I sat here today and listened, we've talked about a lot of these things.
...that you've provided during the evaluation process and positive or negative comments. I always appreciate, there's always more to learn, always ways to improve. And I certainly recognize that and strive to do that. So, thank you for the evaluations and I appreciate the input that you give throughout the year and working together what we are able to accomplish.
Jeff Payne, HR manager. And I'm just going to quickly say thank you to all the council members for doing evaluations for both the city manager and the city clerk in a short period of time. So, we're going to talk about the city manager first. Given the scores that he received, he is eligible for an increase as of October the first, up to four percent. So, if you'd like to have any discussion about it or you want to jump straight into a motion, that's up to you guys.
Jump straight into a motion? I'd like to make a motion for a four percent increase in salary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a four percent increase effective October 1.
Effective October 1.
Okay, for the sitting managers' salary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Again, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's relative. My contract says twenty-four seven, I'm available, so.
And you were, and you still are.
He responds just about any time. So, next up is the city clerk, right? And given the scores that Karen has received on her evaluation, she would also be eligible for an increase effective ten one, up to four percent. Do you have something you'd like to add?
Well, I just want to, Karen Smith, city clerk for the record, just want to reiterate some of the things that Greg said. I appreciate the time that you spent and the thoughtful comments, whether positive or negative regarding the clerk's performance this past year, so, thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion for a four percent raise.
Second.
October 1st. Thank you.
We have a rec, we have a motion and a second for a four percent increase for the city clerk's salary effective October 1. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And city clerk?
Okay, going through the boards and committees items, still have a number of vacancies. We are starting to see some applications come in, so, that's good news. Board of zoning appeals, we have one regular and two alternates. Burnt Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee, we have two seats. Code Enforcement Board, two regular seats and two alternate seats. The Historic Preservation Advisory Board, one alternate, and Planning Commission, two alternates. Last under vacancies, Utility Advisory Board, two seats. So, under nominations, we have four seats on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, and we have four individuals that we're putting forth for nomination. Since we have four seats and four nominations, if you would like to nominate all, in case we get any additional before the next meeting, and then you'll have more to choose from, you can nominate one person, two people, however you want to proceed with it, if you've had a chance to look over their resumes. But I did want to bring some of the names forward so that we could continue to have a quorum on that board. Without nominating and eventually appointing a couple people, we're not going to be able to move forward with conducting business on HPAB.
Okay, so, the four names that are up for grabs here are Beth Magnin for reappointment, Lucille Ponte for reappointment, and Jacqueline Pascoe from an alternate seat to a regular seat, and Casey Nemec for the fourth seat. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, we can either nominate all or nominate and appoint four, or however you want to do it.
However you would like to proceed.
Nominate and appoint all four.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to nominate and appoint Beth Magnin, Lucille Ponte, Jacqueline Pascoe, and Casey Nemec to the four open seats on HPAB. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then, finally, under nominations, for the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee, we have two seats, and we have three individuals eligible for nomination.
So, you need to...
With this one, since we do have more nominees...
No, they need to nominate all.
You can just nominate them, and then you'll vote at the next meeting.
We need a motion?
We just need to nominate all? Motion? Make a motion nominate all? I'm sorry, a motion to nominate is not needed. You just nominate, so, thank you for that.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. City manager?
Any comment I'd like to further make is, when you look at the left side of the room and all the people that are over there, there's been a lot of work that's been accomplished in the last few weeks by people that are in the room, and we certainly appreciate the effort that's going into it. People are still slammed with everything from information requests, or when's this going to happen, or that going to happen, to physically controlling crews and making sure the city's safe, and everything from A to Z. So, I really appreciate the work that's going into it by city staff, everything they've done to keep operations running, because without that, we would be in much worse shape than we are now. I know we still have things we're working through and working out, and lessons that we've learned to improve next time, when it happens. Hopefully, it won't be for quite some time, but it gives us time to learn and improve things that we currently do. I know that Public Works, for example, has been slammed, and it still is, and we don't even have our debris until the FEMA contractors are finished. We don't have our debris up and running yet, and, you know, questions everywhere, and everyone wants things taken care of, and rightly so. And everyone's working very hard to make that happen, so, thank you for everything that's done. No one's missed a paycheck, and we're great. Mary Beth here today was kind of something that, when people see her, everyone always loves her because they get a paycheck, so, what's not to love? So, we really do, I just keep reiterating, there's a lot of work that's still ongoing, and it's day and night. There's emails that are coming in all hours of the day or night, and we have people that are answering them, and, you know, probably tired of hearing from me, and just really making things happen, so, thank you for everything you've done. We have temporary accommodations, we've got, you know, places that we can now lock up employees that have bars on the windows. We're not doing that, but, so, everyone's putting up with something to some degree in addition to the amount of work that they're also cranking out, so, again, thank you for all that.
And I apologize for all the emails this past week, especially all of you guys. I know, Brian, you probably hate me. I, for some reason, I was the information central, apparently, this past week, and I think I've sent forty-five, fifty emails, and I copy Greg on everything if I send him directly to his staff, but I usually, I usually try to make sure that I incorporate the department head that it's relevant to, and then, and copy Greg, so he knows what's going on, but, oh my gosh, just lots and lots of questions that have been coming through, and I really appreciate everybody with their prompt responses to all my crazy questions, because I've had some crazy ones this week, so, thank you very much.
I think you could add one in front of that.
Oh, yeah, well, maybe, no, there were a lot this week, and, you know, I have a lot that I can put in my newsletter, that's for sure. Why can't I have the mulch that's being done? Oh, yeah, anyway. I have a question for you before we move on. What's the situation with the Christmas tree and Christmas decorations?
The, if you see some of the Park Skies and some of the other guys that we've had to corral into it right now, the frame of the Christmas tree is being put up. We're up about, what, eight feet or so right now, I believe, so, that tree is being assembled, and we'll...
So, we can use that corner?
We can use the corner, we can use the tree, and they're working on it so that we make sure that we don't inhibit any celebrations that aren't official, official events.
Cool, thank you. City attorney?
Thank you. For council members Carey and Cummings, I wanted to sincerely thank you and enjoyed working with you, and as you leave today, and wish you well on your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm still going to say that at next meeting, just so.
Yeah.
I didn't forget that.
Yeah, we do have, we do have parting comments and parting gifts when the next meeting comes up, but I agree, I will reiterate what Mr. Levin just said. It has been a pleasure and an honor serving with both of you, and you will be missed, and we will look to you for wisdom from time to time, should we need it, and we really appreciate everything that you both have done and contributed to the city, and devoting your life and your efforts to making the city better. We really appreciate it. And just a last minute notice, I've mentioned it before, and I've talked to all of you, but November eleventh, at eleven AM, in this room is the Veterans Day Ceremony, and everyone is invited to participate. If you would like to join us, just let me know, so I can tell Gary Butler how many of the staff will be here, for any of you who might like to participate that day as well. And that's all I have. Mrs. Carey?
Well, I have one thing I would really like to do, and that is, I would like to hold Kurt Penciluck up for consideration. He is the head of the Housing Authority, and if there was ever a person who took their job seriously in providing safe, healthy environment for the people that need a safe, healthy environment, it is him. He worked twenty-four seven during the storm, he didn't even stay in his home in Cape Coral. He was here doing what he could do to secure the buildings, and as I said before, there was a lot of damage, and we had a lot of terrified residents, but his presence, and I think the presence of a lot of the staff, they also came in to keep things going, was just, it meant so much to the residents. And, you know, we don't really do much with the Housing Authority, but I feel that, you know, maybe we need to just tell him thanks, because what he did was remarkable. Our janitors, the servicemen for the Housing Authority, was flooded in Northport, so he couldn't get down, and then somebody had to take him to Sebring to be with his relatives, and he found a way to get to the Housing Authority to help Kurt. They also were totally without internet for three weeks, and during that time, they had their audit. And of course, HUD doesn't wait for anybody, so, without internet, they had to do an audit, which was also amazing. So, I would just like to say that I, you know, I love all of you, and I think you are all phenomenal, but it doesn't stop at the staff doors, it goes out into the city, and we are really blessed to have him in charge of our Housing Authority. And he did not pay me to say that.
That's, but she was right, she was right. I've had some interaction with him in the past couple of weeks, myself, and pretty intense guy. Excuse me. Melissa?
No, I am okay today.
Mr. Cummings?
A pleasure and honor serving with you all. It's been awesome.
Okay. Okay, and the last agenda item is economics of a downtown business district.
Now, remember, if you come in after this, you're going to get three minutes, so, you have to get an official agenda item, then you can have more.
Oh, my goodness. All right. These are just some reflections on our conversations regarding downtown development.
Is that microphone on?
Is it on now?
Okay.
All right. Oh, let me open it the other way, so it does better. Just one second. How do we do the reader? No, that's not it. Just a second, sorry. All right, here we go. All right. It's being difficult now, no? All right. This is a discussion of the trends that have led to the current conditions for the city's commercial base and resulting tax increases that have come in recent years. There's actually a proverb...
Do you want this on the monitor?
Yes, monitor, yes.
Not?
It's not?
It's not on.
Thank you, senor. Where there is no vision, the people perish. Who we are, we are a small historic southern town, formed in tradition of unity, collaboration, enterprise. Based on our roots as a pioneer city, we're the balance of old Florida Gulf Coast living and called on by seasonal residents. As long as we maintain our Punta Gorda values, which are empathy for our neighbors, protection of our natural environment, and support of our small businesses, we'll thrive well into the future. We value our elders and cherish our children. Our elders embrace the role of leaving a legacy through creating opportunities for those coming after them, and our young people work to maintain our way of life. In order for Punta Gorda to maintain its historic identity, we must hold onto these values. We can only do this if we operate in a sustainable manner. Where we are right now, right now, we're not sustainable. Our small city way of life is threatened, the city has had to raise taxes to avoid going bankrupt in five years because it currently lacks the commercial tax base needed to cover the cost of services. I recently asked a well-respected retail recruiting firm, which is hired by small cities to revitalize their historic downtowns, to perform an economic leakage study on downtown Punta Gorda. They found that Punta Gorda is losing a hundred and eighty million dollars a year in commercial revenue due to no longer having a true downtown. Downtowns or retail districts comprise the small businesses. Downtowns are where city residents obtain most of their goods and services. Downtowns are where residents live a walkable distance from small businesses. As pointed out in the study, most of the goods and services consumed by our residents are done so outside of the city. This has led to a severe shortage of commercial taxes needed by the city to maintain the high level of services provided to our residents. When cities have a high, have a healthy level of commercial revenues, the rates of taxes can remain low because commercial taxes cover the cost of services not being paid. Basic financial picture of the city. What is a millage? Millage is a term that represents a tax rate levied on real estate or other property. One mil is one thousandth of a dollar or one tenth of a cent. The cost of the city to provide services to our residents is about five point one mils. The residential tax our residents currently pay is three point nine mils. This is an eighteen percent increase from the year before, which our residents do recognize in this year's tax notice. This difference between five point one and three point nine five has to be covered. There are three options that are available in this reality. One, increase taxes on a population that is largely on fixed income. Two, reduce the level of services. Three, increase the commercial tax base. One, I personally believe increasing taxes on a larger, largely retired population on fixed income should not be an option. Two, our residents are accustomed to high level of services, so reducing services is politically not an option. The cost of delivering services to our residents is higher than what is in the numbers because it's been mastered, the reducing the number of essential staff positions, keeping our staff pay level less than market rates, and the use of reserves. And it's, you know, we've talked about the sixteen point seven reserves we want to have on hand because in emergency situations, we want to have money to spend, because FEMA only reimburses, they don't pay at the beginning. So, number three, increase in the commercial tax base to be in balance with our increasing population. It's the only responsible option. In doing so, the tax burden on residents can be reduced. Reducing taxes is becoming more prudent in the certain rise of insurance costs with this year. I was talking with several insurance companies, and these new flood maps are coming into effect this year, and this is something we've really got to consider. Being that many of our residents have mortgages and the increasing cost of insurance and now higher taxes, that their debt to loan receives will become unsustainable, and for new residents, it will become much more expensive in our community to live due to these cost increases. The loss of the commercial tax base. Our city council changed the building code from downtown to approximate that of a suburb rather than downtown business district that had been since eighteen eighty-five. As a result, this is after Charlie. As a result, two hundred and forty businesses were lost, and since then, there's been neither the population-based rooftops nor the critical mass of business activity to restore Punta Gorda's downtown business district. As a result, Punta Gorda is still not economically recovered from Hurricane Charlie due to political decisions and economic realities. In addition to the post-Chargely changes to the building code and not following the best practices of urban design, we've also denied our older residents who live in areas far from downtown areas, such as many parts of PGI, from having ready access to goods and services within their neighborhood, something very important to a population of largely older retirees. What is the evidence of the loss of the commercial base? In addition to the obvious lack of a downtown business district around downtown, a place where our residents, up until the time of Charlie, were historically able to obtain their goods and services in Punta Gorda, where the spending would contribute directly to city coffers, keeping the cost of living low, and I had this leakage study, so I had the numbers here. This is the study had on the city, and you see to the ones going to the right, those are the things which we are spending, but not spending within the city of Punta Gorda. So, the numbers extrapolated are, we lose a million dollars a year in limited service eating place sales, we lose three hundred thousand in full-service restaurant sales, we lose twenty-nine million dollars in general merchandise sales, we lose four million in shoe sales, we lose eleven point five million in clothing sales, we lose six point five million in health and personal sales, we lose twenty point five million in grocery sales, and we lose five point one million in electronics and appliance sales. What is smart growth? Smart growth means having commercial development that's in balance with residential growth. When I was a child, Punta Gorda had five thousand residents. Now, it has nineteen thousand off-season, it went around thirty-two during season. Yet over this time, the amount of coastal revenues is not paced with the cost of services. So, this is our population increase. It went from nineteen sixty, thirty-nine hundred, to two thousand twenty-one, about nineteen eight hundred. So, in growing this, we've become vulnerable because you need to have the commercial service base in order to balance out the cost of delivering services. At this point now, because the taxes we bring in are less than the price of service delivery, it keeps the city in a dangerous situation. So, why do we need more residential downtown? There's an adage well-known in the real estate profession, retail follows rooftops. This means there has to be a minimum concentrated population in particular area to justify a commercial enterprise. One of the most critical losses to our downtowns prior to Hurricane Charlie was the loss of hundreds of units of senior housing downtown. These residents created a critical mass of economic activity that supported our downtown businesses. Without the return of downtown residences, our few remaining downtown businesses have little hope of surviving in the long term. During the time when our seniors were able to live downtown within walking distance of goods and services, the downtown supported two grocery stores and a array of small shops. This is the map of our downtown now. You can see in the downtown core, all was purple, are vacant commercial lots, most of which have been vacant since the time of Charlie. There are no vacuums. In physics, there's a saying, nature abhors the vacuum. This refers to belief by Aristotle that nature contains no vacuums because the denser surrounding material containing world would immediately fill. Basically, what this means is that Punta Gorda for a hundred and forty years has been the historic downtown of Tri-County area. At least we've left it for the last twenty years. Our bluff is now being called, in that in not being the downtown, other areas in the county are now developing. So, we now have Charlotte Harbor along Bay Shore, we have Sunseager, we have Westport, we have Arndate Point, we have Tucker's Grave, we have Beaufort Ranch, we have North Point, Welland Park. But the first time in a hundred and forty years, we're not going to be the default downtown. This is critical because these residents from other places spend in our city, and they hope to keep our taxes low for our residents. I had a meeting with the planning director of Northport, and I joked, thank you for not having a downtown, you keep our taxes low. Well, Northport now does have a downtown, Welland Park, and they're growing their nine activity centers to meet the commercial needs of our residents, so, which means we've got to do our planning to accommodate the possible loss of Northport residents downtown. Why is this important? This is important because we also want our downtown to be an attractor for people from these other areas, because at this point, we don't have the workforce housing for people to live in our city. So, we need to make it so they're attracted to come here, so they also see our city as a place to come and work and keep providing services to our residents. Attainable housing and form-based codes. It's been recognized the single greatest contributor to the shortage of workforce and affordable housing is the fixation of the current local governments in creating density and zoning rules that predominantly allow for the construction of single-family detached housing. The irony is that the small-town American building types and walkable streets that are so considered to be attractive and representative of historic small cities and towns are largely prohibited by being constructed due to zoning and density rules. These missing middle housing structures, which are home-scale buildings of varying densities that are in the middle between single-family detached and small apartments. These are examples. Stack duplexes, all fit within our model aesthetic, duplexes side by side. Stack triplexes. Quiplex. Multiplex. Live-work. These are, these are ways that we can actually insert workforce into our environment if we allow for the density and zoning for it to grow. I use Savannah, Georgia as a model on how we can restore a lot of our historic identity. Savannah is very nice now, but it's only been within this last three or four years. They've really, really put into it. They've done a lot of reusing of old structures, and they've done a lot with form-based codes in that they maintain adherence to a aesthetic that is downtown historic Savannah, but they don't become overly concerned with the use of the space because it's really based on the aesthetics. And so, in that case, like example, you can have in a neighborhood, an old mansion that actually becomes a small restaurant, so therefore, the residents are actually within walking distance of somewhere they can eat. And as long as the structure maintains its consistent exterior look that supports the city's overall aesthetic, there is less concern about use, whether residential or commercial. And the natural parking configuration in historic districts is to have the majority of parking on the street, is because this outside connection that differentiates historic districts from suburban zones. In a suburb, people can go into a garage, enter the house, never interact with neighbors. In a historic district, because parking for most residences is on the street, residents have to interact with each other. This is the characteristic of downtown living. The abundance or lack of parking is a factor which the viability of a use is determined rather than an arbitrary restriction imposed by our use of a property. This is something which I've noticed also. We've been on this eighteen-year cycle since nineteen sixty-eight, which city council is making decisions increasingly at odds with the city's long-term interests by harming the downtown. As mentioned earlier, nineteen sixty-eight, against the interest of residents, the city decided to destroy a neighborhood through the imposition of public housing, which was not needed by the residents. In doing so, the result was the business district was destroyed, and that led to the decline of the city itself well into the eighties. Also, as I mentioned earlier, just for the note, for the record, there is no such place as the east side. This is a fiction created by people who are not from Punta Gorda who do not know our history. Punta Gorda has had a single downtown towards its entire history. It was not until city council between sixty-five and sixty-eight imposed this idea of a socially segregated city onto Punta Gorda that the decline of downtown began. Eighty-six, city council decided to reason on a large portion of the historic district east of forty-one to commercial zoning. As a result, many more historic homes were destroyed, changing the entire look of the downtown area. There were just as many historic homes east of forty-one as there were west before, and these actions greatly harmed the historic integrity of the downtown historic district. Two thousand four and five, city council imposed building code on downtown that prevented it from revitalizing its downtown business core, and moved to a significant number of senior houses away from downtown, culling the residential population needed to support downtown commercial district. Twenty-two and twenty-three, we've already begun on the wrong foot, in that we're denying best practices in urban design and preventing three and a half of five districts' residents from benefiting from expert planning advice. Due to our rejection of best practices, we've turned a large portion of PGI into a food desert, residents being miles from food or essential services. Our master plan accounted for the particular needs of retired population, which at this point, we lose fifty percent of every five to seven years due to not being a suitable place to age and place. City council, after fifty-four years, will either have to break this cycle of self-harm towards its historic identity and finally revitalize its downtown core, or facilitate the beginning of the final decline of the city, through the loss of, first, through the loss of influence in county and regional affairs, and then through increasing cost of living for our residents, making us an unattractive retirement destination for Gen X, meaning that unlike the past forty-plus years where each new generation of retirees bustles out our economy through moving to Punta Gorda through this basis, we will become like Sun City Center. When I was a child, Sun City Center was the place to retire to, but at that, but at that time, it ceased to attract new residents and eventually fell into a relative obscurity as compared to two generations ago. We face a similar fate if we do not change our ways and become a better community to age and place and to raise a family. But it's going to become a place that only caters to the young active retiree, it does not adequately accommodate the needs of older retirees. Because of this, we lose this fifty percent of population. And we seemingly have not been adversely affected by this high turnover rate because of the consistent inbound migration of new retirees, but if my generation, the oldest of which are now getting to the age of becoming young retirees, the Gen Xs, who follow the current generation of retirees, the baby boomers, do not find Punta Gorda as an attractive enough city to retire to, it will become unaffordable for older retirees to continue to live here, because they will have to carry the full weight of the city through the residential taxes. AARP. In seeing all this on the horizon, I came to recognize that because so many of our residents come from other places, the warning signs that were so apparent to those who are from here, that our city being one more like a homeowners association than a... here, that our city being one more like a homeowner's agency than a municipal government, it may not be apparent to new residents. So, I invited AARP's Florida subject matter expert to our city council to share her perspective on our citywide master plan and our current trajectory as a city. I invited Dr. Kathy Black, who is a Next Avenue Top Fifty National Influence in Aging, a Hartford Geriatric Faculty Scholar and a fellow in the Geriatrical Society of America. She led Florida's first age-friendly community and age-friendly community consultant for AARP Florida. She, she serves as advisory role in aging for four state departments, including the Florida Department of Elder Affairs, Departments of Health and Transportation, and the Florida Consensus Center. She's a professor of Aging Studies at Mercy of South Florida. She spoke on the importance of livable communities and to provide us expert advice in aging to ensure that we were designing our citywide master plan in a manner that provides the best built environment for our residents to best be able to maintain their quality of life and age in place. I have the meeting, which you can see on YouTube. It was the city council meeting, September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. She's speaking between thirteen minutes and forty-six seconds and forty-six minutes and forty seconds. In my decision-making of city council, I was taking into account whether these actions were taken within the livability communities of eight domains of livability and the eight-to-eighty cities philosophy. Livable communities enhances personal independence. It allows residents to remain in their homes and communities as they age and provide opportunities for residents of all ages, ability levels, and backgrounds to engage in fully in civic, economic, and social life. According to AARP, a livable community is one where one is safe and secure. It offers choices where one can live and get around. It equitably serves residents of all ages, ability levels, incomes, races, ethnicities, and backgrounds. Livable communities include essential features that allow residents of all ages and backgrounds to thrive. They include mixed-use zoning, safe and varied transportation options, and diversity of housing types. Livable communities also include public spaces that benefit everyone. They also provide essential businesses such as grocery stores. Why, as I mentioned earlier, we've created food deserts for our older residents in PGI because we've chose not to follow the expert advice of our consultant, who works in direct concert with AARP in creating the best conditions for residents to age in place. In eliminating districts three, two, three, four, and most of five from the citywide master plan, because we didn't like the expert advice and suggesting, we placed small-scale commercial development PGI so that our, our older residents and children could be nearer to essential goods and services. So, at the end, Dr. Black spoke very candidly. She said in her entire career, she'd never seen a community plans a little for its future. She said, "Even the villages with this explicit focus on retirement living recognizes the importance of building workforce housing for those who provide them services and charter schools for their children." She said that, "We're operating like a water tower placing everything at the top of nothing for the future." Eight to eighty. She left us with an important perspective to reflect on. This concept is called eight to eighty. It means that the very same environment that an eight-year-old needs to thrive, an eighty-year-old needs to thrive, meaning that if we build our environment to take care of the youngest and oldest members, everyone else will be taken care of. It's for this reason that downtown living be provided to seniors again, like it was in the past. As our seniors grow older, many would like to downsize into more manageable living environment. The very same house or apartment that is ideal for downsizing seniors is the very same configuration that a starter house for working family. In restricting the housing types in our city, we're not only reducing the ability for our workforce to live in our community, where salaries would be contributing to our economy rather than to the communities where they live, we also are reducing the ability for our older retirees to be able to continue to live in their community as they grow older. The reason we lose so many of our neighbors to other communities as they age is because we're not built to accommodate the needs of an aging population. Walkability, ready access to goods and services, ready access to social enrichment activity and socialization is essential. Because we're a city with a high percentage of seniors, we cannot afford to pretend we are not and take the initiative to create the best conditions for our residents to thrive in, which are walkable communities, which essential goods, services, and social activities are near enough to our residents so they can access them within close proximity of their homes. One of the main reasons we lose so many of our residents to other communities is, one, it becomes harder and harder to drive to access goods and services on demand, and two, the size of homes that many of our residents become hardest to manage as they age. Yet, city council does not allow for zoning. It allows for downsized housing inventory that will be suitable for our seniors to move into and maintain their independence. Our reality, most of our residents are retirees living on fixed incomes. They wish to live in a city where they do not have to worry about increasing taxes and where they know they have enough financial reserves in place for natural disasters like hurricanes. Downtown residents patronize downtown businesses on a daily basis. Our current building code restricts the building of desperately needed downtown residences. Our downtown can be restored through re-adopting building codes that reflect the city's historic architectural forms. Form-based codes are a way to ensure development is done in architectural forms that represent our city. Form-based codes allow us to return to the low-rise mixed-use buildings for our downtown. Being the main architectural feature of our city was Hotel Pontagorda, its height, including decorative features, can serve as a maximum height for downtown core, as this was the historic high skyline of our city. These low-rise downtown buildings, in addition to housings, shops, and boutiques on the ground floor, will provide housing for downsizing seniors and above. We currently lose this fifty percent, like I mentioned. If we are the retirees-friendly city we say we are, we should make this city more livable for seniors through providing walkable downtown housing options to them. In doing so, we'll be supporting the growth of our downtown small businesses, which provide needed goods and services and keep our residents, our taxes low. In order to maintain our way of life, we have to return to our true identity as the smaller historic city that serves as the county's seat and holder of the county's historic downtown. We have the opportunity to celebrate who we are through infusing our values into our architectural framework. In doing so, we will be providing our city residents with what we need in the future. When I came with the council, my vision was to create the conditions in which our children and elders can once again thrive. I feel this foundation has been laid. With the new form-based codes, expert advice on urban planning, we both have within our staff and as hired consultants, we can very easily, within the next eighteen to twenty-four months, rectify fifty-four years of regressive policies through facilitating the development of dynamic, walkable, responsive downtown living and working corridor in which our elders and our young families can once again thrive. I leave this achievable goal for the incoming council to achieve. To paraphrase former Mayor Harbor Gopper, "We should not be so selfish as to make decisions that will deny our city a future. We should establish and govern with the vision and intent of a vibrant Pontagorda one hundred years from now." So, our legacy is this. Effective local government decisions come from interviewing stakeholders directly impacted on the issues. Research on best practices on the field of inquiry. Expert staff review and robust public input on the issue. It's this combination of expert advice, research, and public input that an elected official can make an informed decision that will have a long-term positive impact on the community. Though there may be peer social pressure to do so, it's very important that future city councils guard against making decisions based on the results of holding a close circle of friends on their opinions on an issue. This leads to one-year or less vision horizon decision-making whereby to govern responsibly, an elected official should have a ten, twenty, fifty-year vision horizon of making decisions. Because city council, being a city council has been a great honor and privilege to serve our community, placing one's viability ahead of everything else, it's very important that